We should be quick meeting, you know?
I hope so. I got a couple of little things that I've added. Nothing big.
I don't think so.
Just a couple of little updates.
He just gave the sign that we're on, but...
Just being out, we're off all day, all since Saturday.
Well, you know that you read his packet.
We're all set? Are we on? Good evening, welcome to the Southbridge School Committee meeting of Tuesday, March 13th, 2012. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
This time it's public input. Is there anyone in from the audience that wishes to address the school committee? Good evening. Just state your name and your address.
Erin Quinney, 8 Crescent Street. And I had a question as to the timeline that said will be posted long ago on the webpage as far as the timeline for the redistricting in order to ensure the smooth transition. I think there's a lot of anxiety with the lack of a timeline. Wonder if you could address that, please?
We've been meeting over the last few days with the building staff in each building to give them sort of a tentative timeframe, and we'll put it in writing and put it out on our website sometime by the end of this week.
By the end of this week, thanks.
We're in the process of right now drawing the lines and getting the two buildings balanced. So there's not a lot to tell anybody until we get that process done, and then we'll be sending a letter to all the parents, kind of updating them on exactly what happens from that point forward.
And will that timeline include when, as a parent, we would know what school our child will be attending?
Yes. Our plan would be that you would be notified, our timeframe is to notify you before spring break, if not immediately thereafter spring break.
As to which school?
As to which school.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else that wishes to address the school committee? Anyone? All right. Seeing none. Call this meeting to order. Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Mr. Dugigorio?
Present.
Dr. D'Amico?
Present.
Present.
Mr. Raza?
He's delayed.
Dr. Ollinger?
Mrs. Principa?
Present.
Mrs. Woodrow?
Present.
Six present.
Thank you. Agenda M5, approval of minutes of the regular school committee meeting of February 28th, 2012. Is there a motion?
No motion.
Second.
Any errors, corrections, or omissions, room? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed?
Present.
Dr. D'Amico, present. Motion carries. Reports representative of the student advisory committee, Helena Benoit. I don't see her here this evening, so we'll pass on that. Agenda M7, we have presentations. We have a couple of presentations this evening. First one, the presentation by Southbridge High School students. They had requested to be put on the agenda relative to project that they were working on. We have research results, social and academic data collection, so we'll invite the students to come forward to make their presentation. Head over, right over to the microphone. I believe there's three young ladies that are going to address the school committee.
Hello, and good evening. My name is Tiffany Ortega, and I would like to thank everyone who came here tonight to support us and the school committee for letting us be here. On July 26th, 2011, we received a small grant from the Harrington Hospital Auxiliary. We decided as a team that we needed to study the social and academic issues that impact the behaviors, health, and futures of the youth in Southbridge. We began to design surveys to gather research. We created two different surveys, a youth activity survey and a youth academic survey. We were then asked to design a teacher survey for the teachers. Our surveys were designed to inform us on students' education and socialization and how they're being impacted. We wanted to know why we are the seventh highest teen pregnancy rate.
Hold on a second. I'm sorry, Tiffany. Can you just either go closer to the mic?
It's hard to hear. I don't know if it's working.
It was working earlier. I can hear out there.
Okay. Just need to speak a little bit louder, okay, Tiffany?
Thanks.
Thank you.
Our surveys were designed to inform us on students' education and socialization and how they're being impacted. We wanted to know why we have the seventh highest teen pregnancy rate in the state, why only 72.1% of our students graduated in 2011, and why 18% of our students dropped out in 2011. When we distributed the surveys to the students, they completed them in class, during lunch, and in the halls before and after. The surveys were given to random people, and 101 students were surveyed. Several teachers were so impressed that they asked us to make one for themselves. The teacher surveys contained a cover letter to explain who we were, what we wanted to do, and that we wanted the teachers' input on it. It was very beneficial to have the teachers' input for our research. We got the permission to distribute them, and so we did. The teachers were emailed and informed about it, and we were able to receive 25 surveys back. Thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
Hi. Hi. I'm Jaylen Clone. The most amazing thing about our results is that the students and teacher agreed on four out of seven aspects of the high school that need to be changed in order for the education and social aspects to improve and positively impact their lives and future. If you refer back to our report on the third page, you see the final results of the research. The youth academic survey, the top four things that the students would like to change are the rules, the schedule, the class size, the teacher attitudes, plus the number-one choice of the students was the teaching methods and goals. The teacher academic surveys, the top four things the teachers would like to change, the class size, rotating schedule, teacher attitude, and the rules. Plus, two additional choices of the teacher, student attitudes and leveling. Thank you.
It's harder here.
Hello. My name is Rosa Berito, and I just want to clear one thing off. We're not here to criticize the school committee or anything. We just want to fix a few things, and we want to make our school a real, true community, because I believe that's what we want when we get this new high school there. Right? That's all we want? A true community. So we only want you guys... There? Better? Okay. So we only ask for you guys to respond to what the students and the teachers are requesting. They're just requesting a few changes that I believe aren't that hard for them to make. We want to make this school a community, and we believe that these things could help make the school a community for everyone that is in there. We would also ask you guys for, when you guys are putting the budget in, to put some money apart for other activities that 73% of the kids that responded to the survey would go to. They would like programs that could possibly impact their futures, like programs that could help their life skills, like tutoring, yoga, dance, art, et cetera, not just sports. Southbridge is full of sports. We want extra things that aren't just sports. So we would like some money in the budget to do these things after school that teachers are willing to help. And to help some of the other things that you will find in your folders, which if you can pass through pages where there are some comments of the teachers and students, you will find some other problems that we think if we made two different committees, one that will be student-teacher committee and a parent-student-teacher committee could help to improve these things. This is all we're asking for, and we please ask you to take in consideration everything that we put in those folders for you, to look them over, and make this new high school, middle school, a true community for everyone that's there. And can you guys come here, please? Jaylen is now going to say a few things in Spanish.
Guys?
Yes?
Listen, I am sure this is a really important thing, and I look forward to hearing every word of it, and it's not an issue with your articulation. I just can't hear you ladies. So maybe with the mic, or pull it up closer to you.
I think it's back there. Lately, we've had trouble with that microphone.
Sorry about that. Hang on.
I know they were going to speak a little bit in Spanish to some of the people. Go ahead.
So we're going to say a few things in Spanish, because we have a lot of Spanish-speaking people here that don't understand English.
Okay.
So las cuatro cosas que los estudiantes cambiarían son las reglas, los horarios, tamaño de las clases, y la actitud de los maestros. Lo más impresionante fue que los maestros también tuvieron la misma respuesta que los estudiantes. Además, quisieran cambiar el tamaño de las clases, el horario rotativo, la actitud de los maestros, y las reglas. Además, algunos puntos adicionales de los maestros fueron la actitud de los estudiantes y el nivel estudiantil. Para los estudiantes había algo más que era los métodos y las metas de aprendizaje. Si tienen alguna pregunta, por favor no duden en preguntar, que hablamos español y inglés. Y una parte que yo dije aquí, que es muy importante para los padres especialmente que sepan, es que nosotros estamos propus... Yeah, proposing. Dos diferentes comités. Uno sería un comité de estudiantes y maestros para las cosas que pasan día a día en escuelas, y otro sería un comité de padres, estudiantes, y maestros para que los tres trabajen junto y hagan esta escuela nueva de verdad, una escuela para la comunidad. Si hay alguna pregunta, por favor.
We want to thank you all for the opportunity to present our findings to all of you. We hope that our work begins today. We want to try to make a change.
Please do not ignore our ability, interest, and belief that we can all make a difference if we work together for positive changes.
I'm going to say this in Spanish as well, for the Spanish-speaking parents. Le damos las gracias a todos por estar aquí y al comité que está aquí presente por dar una oportunidad de hablar y presentar nuestra información. Esperemos que el trabajo empiece hoy. Por favor, no ignoren nuestra habilidad y interés y creencia que podemos cambiar esto si trabajamos todos juntos, hacer un cambio positivo. Sabemos que puede trabajar y se puede hacer, solamente necesitamos trabajar juntos. So thank you, and please take this into consideration. It will really help make this school a community school, and for everyone, it will make it better. Please look at your folders, it's very important. Thank you. Have a good day.
Ladies, excuse me, ladies, if you go back, school committee members may have questions for you and comments.
Not going to let you go that easy.
Mr. Dugigorio?
I have a couple, I have several questions. First of all, congratulations, what a wonderful job you guys did, really. The first question is, I'm curious on the random representative sample of the students. You surveyed 101 students, and it shows how you went about doing this. Do you have, I don't see it, maybe I'm missing it, do you have any breakdown as to where the students stood by way of like which grades they were in?
Well, if you read in the paper that we are reading right now that we just highlighted a few things, it will say that it was scattered from every single grade. There was not just one specific grade, but since we distributed it to some specific teachers, they have all classes from ninth grade to seniors.
And you went from remedial right through advanced?
Yes.
Okay. That's excellent. Another thing, I just think it's pretty cool that if you look at the pie chart, how the things that really don't matter, really don't matter, obviously, when it comes down to things like, you know, when you ask someone, "What would you change about your school?" And someone, you know, wrote down everything, that's only 3%. I mean, that's excellent. That's great that these kids, these students, not kids, these students took things seriously and, you know, put things in perspective. So I really, I really think you guys did a great job.
Thank you.
You know, there are things that we need to work on. I think there are some things, you know, I'd like to see a little more specific, not just what we need to work on, but how you guys think we should work on it, you know? For example, you're saying you want a committee of students and teachers to work on the issues. Well, how many? You know, things like that.
Well, what we're saying is to help these issues, we want to make this two committees. One committee will be made up of students and teachers to work on the things that they pass every day, day by day. And the other committee would be about students, parents, and teachers, because there are many parents that don't speak English, and they are intimidated to go to the school and talk to the teachers. But if they go maybe with their child, it could help for the communication to get stronger and for the teacher and the student to have a better communication relationship right there.
I like that. I like that you have that opinion, because as you know, it's been an uphill battle for the school committee for a long time to get people to come out and support their kids in the schools themselves, and that you brought that, you know, to our attention, that, you know, there are people who really do care, they just feel intimidated. You know, and a way we could address that is maybe perhaps having more people who are bilingual available. So that, you know, there is less feeling of intimidation. I just really do think that you guys did a great job, and we are going to take a good hard look at this. Thank you.
Mrs. Principa?
Thank you. Hi. This is a great job. Now, the committees that you want to form, let's say the one committee with you students and the teachers, is that, and I'm going to tag on to what Mr. Dugigorio was asking, will that delve into these pie chart issues, like the rules? I mean, that was pretty high. That was probably the biggest piece of the pie, was the rules.
Yes.
So you'll delve into what about the rules or the policies?
Yes. That's what we're...
That you want to see too. So that's all with the committee?
Yes.
Okay. All right. And this pie chart is just the students, correct?
Yeah, we did not give them any options whatsoever for that one. They gave them, they gave their own responses. So if you look at that pie chart and you look at another one, let me see what page it is in.
Couple pages back.
Yeah, there's another pie chart. If you look at that one, that one, we actually gave them choices, yes. We actually gave them choices that they have to pick, and if you look at both, they're pretty much reflect the same thing. One was their own choices, and the other one, we gave them the choices. And if you look at both, they pretty much, they reflect the same thing.
So in the second one, do you think your education is being affected by the following?
Yeah.
Teacher attitude, other?
Yeah, we gave them those choices, and they picked.
Teaching methods? Teaching methods and goals?
Yes.
So your committee also is going to really delve in to all these areas of the pie chart?
Yes, because since the teacher and the student will be working together, they can clear up these goals and the teaching methods, and they can improve it to make the students feel comfortable.
I think we'll all be very eager to learn of the results of your committees.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions?
You have a question?
I just want to know if I could get a clarification, and if not, tonight, maybe you could just get back to us. The chart, the pie chart right here on this four-page chart, I don't see a legend for what the different colors mean.
There's a paper right on top of that one, that should be on top of that one.
Okay.
Those are the questions that were asked, and they're in the order that were asked is the order that the classes are in.
Perfect. Thank you.
They're color-coded.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Wigan.
I have a comment, and I appreciate you ladies bringing this to us. I will tell you that already, the class schedule for next year has changed, and will no longer be a rotating schedule next year. That's already been decided. So that will be changed, as I see the students aren't happy with the schedule. And the other thing that I've been told by the two principals is that the no hoodie rule will be gone. It will not be in the book next year.
Well, the thing is, when we say rules, we don't just mean the non-hoodie rule.
I understand that.
But that's a big one too, so we're actually happy about that. But there's other things that, that's why we want the committee to be there. And the rotating schedule, it's not just about rotating, like it's about the time, the class time that they have. We have 50 minutes right now per class, and sometimes 50 minutes is not enough. So when they, when we put rotating schedule, we actually clarified that to the students and the teachers, because they asked about it, and we actually said it was also a time that passed last week, because some want the class to be longer, like 16 minutes at the one before. Because sometimes 50 minutes is just not enough to teach everything that needs to be taught at that time.
Can I ask you a question on that, as a follow-up? So the class length, is that student-driven, you don't believe that there's enough time? Or is that a teacher-driven comment?
It's both.
It's both?
Yes.
Interesting. That is interesting, because that's something we struggled with, I mean, when we changed to block scheduling on that.
Yeah. So if you, there's another paper in there too that actually compares the teacher and the student. There's something on... Okay, so there's not any, so we'll have to add that. But if you, if you look at the pie charts, the one for the teachers and the one for the student, if you compare that, they have pretty much the same thing. So they pretty much had the same thing, and it was amazing, because if you think about it, you never, you will never think that a student and teacher will have the same ideas. And they did.
They did.
They had the same ideas. So I think they should be taken into consideration.
Dr. Ollinger, did you have?
Ladies, thank you very much. Ladies, thank you very much. I certainly appreciate it, and commendable job. Oh, there you go. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Commendable job. A lot of good information, I need to digest it. Certainly welcome. Really impressive. A couple of things you commented on, though. Students, parents, and teachers down here on one of your forums, it says, "Teacher and student attitudes, lack of parent guardian concern, academic support negatively impacts students." I have seen a bit of an issue, and I'm glad you've addressed, well, started to address it, it's a long way to go, about involvement, you know, education doesn't stop when you get, when you leave the doors of the high school or the middle school. We need better, we need better support from parents, absolutely. That's one of them. I noticed something else that's pretty impressive to me. Students need to be held accountable for their performance, not to be, quote, "let off the hook." So I'm hearing that you all are looking for, it says it right here, more rigor, being held accountable. I welcome that, really. That's impressive to me, so thank you very much. There's a lot here to digest. I think you have done a commendable job. I look forward to the feedback and the input, and please take it as you have. Really, this can mean, this can mean a whole lot to us as a school committee, I think I can speak for everybody, and as a community and a district, so kudos to you all. Good for you.
Let me ask you this, what grades are you in?
We are all sophomores.
All sophomore, it's very good.
Nice job.
So as you transition into the new school, you're going to be part of that community you want to build?
Yes.
Okay. So what are your next steps? What do you plan as leaders of that community to do? How are you going to affect change as well? I mean, we can do so much to set policy and assist in policy, and it's great to have the impact, but what do you plan on doing to follow through on your presentation?
Well, if we do this, different committees and all this after-school programs, we feel that we can get more connected to the teachers, and after we get this student-teacher committee, I think that since the teacher and the student will be able to spend time and talk, they could have many different ideas that could help make this school better for everyone. So I think that this committee that we say could really help get some of those ideas and help us be those leaders that everyone hopes we are.
Okay. And have you approached the Mr. Bishop as principal to say, "Hey, hey, this is something that we've come out of a survey," and presented it to him, some of the ideas and thoughts that have come forward, and your thoughts on both staff and students that want to have a student-teacher group? I mean, that's something that would be driven by the principal. Have you approached Mr. Bishop to have a conversation with him on that?
Well, yes, but while we started doing this, he was on vacation, so we actually talked more to Mr. Leach about this.
Okay.
And Mr. Leach actually wants to have a copy of our report, so then when they do the new policies, they're going to be in the handbook, they can take some of the things out of there to put this in the new handbook.
Okay. What I would suggest to you as students would be to go back now to Mr. Bishop and Mr. Leach and not wait and say, you know, and get your classmates and fellow students to form a group, a committee, to go forward to the administration, because a lot of those things are now in the planning stage for us to put forward in the, in next year. So we don't want to wait to say, "Okay, we're going to wait and see what happens next year." You need to be the driving force in the buildings themselves, because truly, we value students' input, and I think it's great that you're here today to give us some of the thoughts that you found in the school. That's great information. I wish it was more students that you had surveyed, but surveys are tough. I mean, we could send a survey out in the community for whatever and get very limited response. So, job well done. Dr. D'Amico? Did you? Okay.
Yeah, tying to that, I would ask as well, did you present this, and I'm assuming you haven't done it, you talked to Mr. Leach, but I'm assuming that you're planning on presenting this as a school, the school assembly, knowing that you surveyed 800 students, and presenting this to a community of 400, I think would definitely drive, you know, support. You would get input from the rest of the community as well. Everybody would be aware where these initiatives have come from and where they're going, and that is yet another layer to building the community. So informing your peers first about what you have done and how it looks and what appears to be on the top of everybody's list, I think would really give you even more, even more support.
The thing is, we need to get permission to be able to do something like that, and we're just, it's a long process. So we're just in the beginning, we're in the first steps right now. We, right now, we finally finished this report to present it to all of you, and we need to get the support also from Mr. Bishop and Mr. Leach to be able to do that in the school.
Ms. Teeden?
Have you approached the student council? I mean, as the representatives of the student body that are supposed to interact with the principal and through their advisor, have you, is the student council involved in this project, or are you planning on involving the student council in this project?
No, they were not involved in this project at all whatsoever. We may need, yes, I think we should, because they are a part of the school, and they want to better the community as well as we do.
And also, I would also encourage you as well, we have a student that sits on the school committee, and their role isn't just to come to the school committee and tell us, "Oh, okay, this week was a dance, this week was great job." That's all important that we want to hear, but we want to hear from students, so you need to go back to that, to the school and use your student representative to the school committee to advocate positions, so use that voice as well. Mr. Raza?
Yeah, I would just like to comment. The one thing I like is the strong leadership, stand up for what you believe in, and it's not just words, it's actually data, it's actually communication. And I have to say that in the structure of our high school and our new middle high school coming online, that there are a lot of groups that you'd have, you must know that we deal with, that you deal with. I would love to get involved if you have a meeting you'd like me to go to, but I do express a concern that if, your leadership is wonderful, and I pay kudos to the students that actually, you know, stood up and made it happen. But there are a lot of student groups, there are class presidents, there are student council, there are a tremendous amount of people. there are, there are a tremendous amount of people in the system that we've been, uh, basically connected to try and get this, uh, information, or get information towards what's going on, how are things going? But, uh, this data package, uh, and I, and I do, your research is true. I, I sat in on a class, uh, last week, and, uh, the time in the class is not enough. By the time you get seated, you get going, it's ended, and you're off and running. So, you know, just a couple of these questions, I've experienced myself as a school committee member. I would love to get involved, if there's anything after school, uh, I would love to give you my phone number, and you can call me as a school committee member, and I would love to stand behind this leadership, to watch it at its youthful age, and to see that, uh, you know, that you get the proper support behind you in the Porsche. So, you get things happen. I mean, we have a lot of data and studies, but true leadership makes it happen, and I think you've got it.
Um, adding to what you just said, uh, the school, the committee, the committee that we're trying to make, that will be Student, Teacher, Parent Committee, also includes you guys. When we say, um, teachers, we count as you, you guys as part of teachers, because you make a lot of things possible for us in school. So, we count as you, we count for you guys, that when we make this committee, we want at least two representatives from you guys to go there, to be there, to encourage us, to bring news over here, so that it wouldn't just be us. And, um, to what Mr. Jovan said about, and someone else said about the school commi- um, what is it?
Student council?
Yes, the student council. Sometimes the student council is dealing with their own problems, and they don't have enough time sometimes to just listen to what we have to say. And we felt like that was a problem going on, people were not taking the time to listen to what the students had to say, and sitting there listening, collecting data, and we decided that needed to be done. It's a new school, we want to have new changes, and no one was listening to what we were saying. And that's why we decided to do this survey, so people were listening and knew what was going on, not just from the school committee that's on top, or from everyone else, the student council, but from the students that are down low, that are in the middle, that are the ones there, day by day, the teachers that are dealing with us every single day. We wanted people to know, and sometimes they're just too busy and can't hear us.
Ms. Dickagora, and then Dr. O'Leary?
I just wanna, just wanna finish by saying that we sit here every couple of weeks, and we listen to presentations all the time. And there are times when we're up here and we're just incredibly fixated on maybe not what's going on in front of us, because whoever's speaking lost us early on. The clarity, cohesiveness, and maturity that you've brought to this presentation has to put this particular presentation, for me, up in the top five, six of the year. You guys did a fantastic, fantastic job. I can't believe you're only sophomores, that, that blows me away. Congratulations.
Dr. O'Leary?
Anything else?
Uh, yeah, Dr. O'Leary?
One last thing, ladies, and I think you'll find as you go forward, that this is a start, and, uh, other things will be coming. Uh, this is, is one comment, sort of to that effect. You had commented on how the student council has many of their own issues to deal with. But I guess I can agree with that to a point, but by the same token, I say, isn't the student council representative of the students? So, I understand what you're saying, um, and I don't wanna steal your thunder, you guys have done a wonderful job all yourselves, but, uh, by the same token, it would seem to me that the student council, maybe if they're busy with all sorts of other things, maybe they should be making themselves busy with, uh, what their, their body, their student body, the people they represent, um, have to say. And that's nothing against them, I'm just saying, maybe we need to, uh, guide direction once in a while.
Uh, we want also, now that you say that, for part of this new school, to have more assemblies about this, because students don't know that the school, that they're there. We hardly see them around class, we just see them as normal students. We never go and complain, we never see them, they never ask either. So, I think we should have maybe some more assemblies that could say these things.
Many new things coming, huh?
We hope so. We really do.
Again, thank you again.
Mrs. Woodrow?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies, I would just wanna say that, um, this has been a very good presentation this evening, and being that, um, we do have a policy subcommittee, and, and I am the chair, I'm more than happy to, um, help you guys through anything, if we can get them a CD of all our policies that you can look through when the time comes, um, because there's many policies that we have, and there's, you know, procedures that follow the policies. I'd be more than happy to, uh, help you along the way, and if you have any questions, if you wanna attend a policy subcommittee sometime, and, uh, learn that route, too, um, by all means, give us a buzz. Thank you.
We would be happy to, and these are the things that should be said in school for all the students to hear, that we are there and we want to listen. That's what we want, for them to listen to us and what we believe is right.
Mr. Lazza?
Uh, just a comment to what Mr. O'Leary was saying. The student council, or whatever students you come encountered with, or, or come in contact with, get everybody under your umbrella. Broaden that leadership. It starts with, uh, one survey, but I think you girls possess the leadership that you can get more people under your umbrella on what you'd like to do, and true leadership, if you continue to grind and you don't give up on it, stands tall, and what you end up doing is impacting the student council to maybe see some of your issues as the priorities. So, this school committee went through a time like that, and there was a change in leadership and a move and a shake and a disagreement, and we have the right to disagree, but we don't have to hate anybody. And we turned around, and, you know, sometimes a good disagreement goes a long way as far as learning about other people, and I think that if you get everybody under that umbrella, you would become a bigger unit and a more impact on, on whatever that moves forward with your issues. I think you're doing a great job.
Well, now that you say that, we will give a copy to the school committee and to everyone, and to the student council, because I think they should be part of it, and they can help.
We're, we're one system in one town, and we're all one people, and that's why, going into this new building, for me, it's exciting, for the school committee, it's exciting, but I think for you, it's something that we will never experience as students, and you will. Good job.
Very good job, and, uh... Nice job. Ms. Simons, did you have something you wanted to add? Uh, you need to go to the microphone now, please. Well, no, otherwise, nobody can hear you on the public, so, that's...
We thought that maybe Mr. Bishop would be here tonight, so maybe you could encourage him to, to be open to them when they come. It would be very helpful, 'cause it's busy in this high school sometimes, so on and so forth, and if we get, like you say, Mr. Leach is in big favor of this, so maybe we could even look at his leadership for this. It would be really helpful to the, than to keep the process going. Thank you for this opportunity. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Ladies, again, outstanding presentation. Please keep in touch with me and any other members of the school committee, I'd be more than happy to, uh, even go with you, uh, to Mr. Bishop and, and advocate for, for your position, because we have, on the school committee, have been saying this for the last year or so, that there truly has been a change in culture in the high school, but we need to continue to grow that. The students' participation at different activities and the school spirit that's been going on is something that's just gonna grow, and I know the enthusiasm for the new school, and it's a point well taken about other activities besides sports, um, and music, so, that's something we need to balance funding-wise, and I know there's other groups out there that have approached me to become part of, uh, the new building. I know the scouting group has approached us about doing a venture, uh, uh, group that would be boys and girls up to the ages of twenty-one to do different activities, but that's just one thing out there, that they wanna truly develop partnerships with the school community and, uh, the town. So, ladies, job well done, I look forward to seeing you the next couple of years at the high school, um, and thank you for being here. And again, I, hard to believe you're sophomores, because, uh, very well spoken, great job. Thank you. Okay. Moving on, we have a request for an overnight field trip request to the Cape for, uh, girls' softball and baseball. Mr. Davis?
Mr. Davis?
Mr. Davis?
Good luck after that last presentation.
Yeah, huh?
Big shoes to fill.
You got it.
Tough act to follow.
Who are you? Um, first of all, I would, um, definitely like to, um, I'm, I'm, uh, just in, in awe of how they, uh, the girls went about presenting their presentation, and it was an outstanding, uh, job.
Yeah.
And, uh, I hope my presentation, um, is about half as good as what they just presented, so, the pressure is on as far as that, but outstanding job.
They're taking their entourage with them, by the way.
I'm here, uh, to, again, this is the, uh, hopefully will become the third annual, uh, spring trip to, uh, Cape Cod. Uh, one, one difference this year, um, the softball team, uh, there was an opening, um, in the Mashpee preseason tournament, um, and the softball team, as well as the baseball team, um, would be attending if, again, uh, it gets passed. So, that, that's a new twist. Um, what, what we're trying to do, it's a preseason tournament, we would leave school on a Friday, um, return on, um, Sunday, April, April first, believe it or not, uh, that's April Fool's Day. So, we would be there staying over Friday evening, as well as, um, Saturday evening. I have already reserved a hotel for, uh, it would just strictly be all the Selfridge, uh, teams that would be staying there, both teams. Uh, there are twenty softball teams involved in this tournament, and there are eight baseball teams, so it's, it's quite an extensive, uh, weekend. They play, uh, three, uh, there are many scrimmages, three games on Saturday, three on Sunday, uh, they're approximately three innings long, they're an hour to an hour and fifteen minutes. The game ends no matter where it is, at that time limit, and, uh, you go off and you play, uh, you know, another team, which is a great opportunity for, uh, our student athletes. It gets them a, a chance to see, uh, the Cape Cod, which, uh, a lot of our students may not experience that. It's also a, uh, great bonding experience for both teams, uh, to come together, uh, and it, it's, it's really almost like a, uh, a college trip. If, if, if any of our students, uh, go on and play athletics, uh, at the next level, uh, they will experience similar situations, uh, with their teams going off and, and playing and staying over. So, uh, that is really the gist of the, uh, of the trip, um, and if anybody has any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Okay. Dr. Dinkelman, then Ms. Principal.
Thank you, Mr. Davis, thanks for putting this together. Uh, just a, um, fiscal question, and I don't know who to direct it, to you or to our business manager. Um, you list the estimated cost of the trip, uh, I'm not sure if we're supposed to add these numbers together, or is it between twenty-five hundred and three thousand in the request?
It's approximately, uh, in that, in that neighborhood.
In between those two numbers, not both together?
Yeah. No, no, not, not, no, it wouldn't be fifty-five hundred.
And, uh, again, the transportation, uh, is not included in that cost? I just wanna know where the funds for that are gonna come from?
Yeah, the tran- The transportation, actually, there's, uh, there's two different, um, prices on the transportation. If, if the bus, uh, picked us up on Friday and dropped us off there and returned on Sunday, um, the, the, the cost then is approximately twenty-two hundred dollars, okay? Uh, if the bus is to remain down there for the weekend, the, again, approximately, it's uh, twenty-eight hundred dollars, plus you pay two nights for the bus driver. Uh, my friend is the athletic director at Mashpee High School, they do have vans, uh, that we would be allowed to use, uh, 'cause our hotel is approximately about five miles from, from the Mashpee High School. So, uh, he's, he's nice enough and willing, uh, to allow us to use two to three vans to transport, uh, our kids back and forth. So, again, um, I was gonna speak with Mr. Wiggins, uh, soon, um, as far as, uh, the transportation, as far as that works out, but...
Mr. Wiggins, are you gonna do some magic here?
Yeah, there would be money in the budget, um, that we've allocated for athletic transportation to cover this.
Uh, just another thing, as far as, um, approximately thirty students would go, or fifteen from each team, and there would be, uh, eight chaperones, uh, coaches, uh, volunteer coaches and parents, uh, right now, so approximately, uh, four, four adults for each team. But we all will be staying in the same, uh, quarters, so, then at that particular time, we're looking at eight, eight chaperones, uh, on those premises as well. We have had the students, or they've had an option, okay? If you also see down the bottom, I, I don't know, uh, cost per student where it says zero to seventy-five dollars, okay? Um, we know, uh, this time of year, the Cape is off, off-season, so it is a little cheaper, and we can afford to, to do it, okay? Obviously, uh, in June, July, and August, we're not gonna be paying seventy-five dollars to spend on, on the Cape, uh, for two evenings. Uh, the reason it says zero is, uh, we, uh, the baseball and softball team, again, are working on a fundraiser, and they're selling discount cards, uh, for twenty dollars. The programs, the baseball and softball programs would, would receive eleven dollars from each card sold, and the company gets nine. So, um, each, each player, or potential player, has had an opportunity to pick up approximately five to ten cards, uh, which Coach Guerrero is taking care of the softball, and I'm taking care of the baseball. Um, and the, the cards that they sell, that would go towards their trip, okay? Um, so that's why the zero is there. For example, I mean, just rounding it off, if, if, uh, you know, they were gonna sell, uh, we gave them eight cards and, and they sold four, um, they're bringing in, you know, actually forty-four dollars towards their trip. So, uh, that, that has helped, uh, alleviate the cost for, for the students. Uh, naturally, some students sell more cards than others, and, uh, you know, no, no one is gonna be deprived of the trip, irregardless, so...
Ms. Principal?
My question's been answered, thank you.
Yeah, I'll sit there. Okay. Any other?
I know I went down last year as a, a parent, uh, chaperone, and, um, to reduce some of the transportation, the parents of their own children transported kids back and forth, or their own child, child, uh, back and forth, to reduce some of that, so. It was a good time, and I know, um, some parents brought down food and had a cookout one day and brought some grills, so, it was a good time, and I know the kids got a lot out of it. I'm glad that you're, you're including the softball team this year, and that they, they had, uh, the ability to, to accept you there, 'cause I know it's pretty competitive to get into that tournament.
Well, two things, I mean, being the director of athletics and the baseball coach, I didn't wanna say, you know, geez, you're just following, uh, taking care of the baseball guys, that was never my intention. So, I really wanted to make sure, but there was just never an opening the, the two prior years to, uh, you know, it's, it's hard to get into this, because a lot of the teams, you know, there, there's a waiting list to get in, and knowing the, the person, again, the director of athletics at Mashpee, uh, we kinda jumped over a lot of teams, so, it's, it's a nice opportunity for our girls to...
Any further questions? Mr. Dickagora?
I, I've gone down on the soccer one, and, I mean, kids have always been fantastic, they've always, uh, given it their best shot. I've been lucky, we've won a few down there, so I think this is really great that the, uh, softball team gets to go down. Hey, you know, it's, it's a great thing. A lot of these kids have never been to the ocean, like you said earlier, and, uh, this is their chance.
You all set, Mr. Lazza?
Yes, Mr. Davis, I'd just like to comment on congratulations as far as an athletic director. You've brought a different concept to our kids, and I know that you're, um, energetic and talking about other things that you'd like to bring to the program, such as camps and stuff, and, uh, it's just something that we've never done, and I think that, uh, since you put this in, I know that the kids have been excited, it's widened their horizons and sees that, they see things that they probably wouldn't have seen otherwise. Um, thanks for the vision and, uh, job well done, and I hope that we can get other sports out there. Um, I know they've done, like Dave says, the soccer and the baseball, and then the softball, but, uh, good job well done.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further? I just hope it's warmer down there this year than it was last year, 'cause it was pretty cold. Okay, thank you, Mr. Davis.
Thank you.
The last, uh, presentation, uh, Doc, uh, Mr. Ely will do, it's a field, late-night field trip request with private transportation to Gillette Stadium, so...
Right, I, I had a request from Asher Capera, uh, one of our coaches, to take our, uh, middle school soccer team down to watch a Revolution Soccer game.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I just hope it's warmer down there this year than it was last year, because it was pretty cold. Okay, thank you, Mr. Davis.
Thank you.
The last presentation, Mr. Ely will do, it's a late-night field trip request with private transportation to Gillette Stadium, so...
Right, I had a request from Asher Capera, one of our coaches, to take our middle school soccer team down to watch a Revolution Soccer game. It's a great opportunity for the kids, but when it came across my desk, the thing that jumped out at me was the private transportation by parents, and that's contrary to your policy, which we have attached. So, if you approve that trip, you're going to have to waive your policy, because the policy does not allow for private transportation under IJOA for field trips. So, I'll leave it at that. It is a good opportunity for kids. It looks like she's got plenty of chaperones. You know, twenty-one kids with, you know, probably six chaperones is a good number, so. Other than the fact that it goes and violates the transportation policy, I would recommend it.
We'll take it up under discussion while it comes up to that agenda. Reported Superintendent, Mr. Davis?
I have asked Dr. Cooper, Dr. Diana Cooper, to be here this evening to give us an update, a brief update, on the state of the ELL program. She's been here for several months, and she's been able to assess the program. Just thought it would be a good time to give you a brief update on where we are and where we're going with the ELL program.
Can you hear me?
No. Pick it up, take it out of there, act like...
Testing, one...
There you go.
Hello, everyone, hello, board members and invited guests. It's hard to believe it was just six months ago that I stood in front of you to meet you all. It was August 23rd, and I really feel like I'm a new person, literally a little bit older, hopefully a little bit wiser. On that evening, I talked about four areas that I want to go back and revisit. I first talked about improving transparency between the program and the school community. I also mentioned evaluating and improving instructional practice, including assessments for English learners. Also, becoming a hundred percent compliant with state and federal mandates. And lastly, any and all other duties assigned to me by the superintendent. So, looking back, I'd like to kind of fill in the blanks and use that as a framework. Currently, there are about two-hundred-and-sixty students in Southbridge identified as English language learners. About fifty-eight percent are identified K through five, twenty-five percent at the middle school level, and sixteen percent at the high school level. So, now we have some data to follow the number two-sixty, which is really helpful. And really, the young ladies that presented earlier, I agree with all of you, it was just really phenomenal to see that young leadership. And really, they laid the foundation for a lot of the things I'm going to talk about tonight. They talked about the communication and parent involvement piece, and I too have addressed that, and would like to see that continued. I mentioned it back in August, and I also mentioned applying for a seat on the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed, ELL, and Bilingual Education Advisory Council, okay? And two of those things have happened, which is wonderful. So, I had the opportunity to provide an overview of the number of ELLs in the district to the Leadership Council back in October, which included the number of ELLs at each school, a breakdown of grade level, and, this was really important, the number of staff members assigned to really work with those students. So, that was helpful for everybody to see, really building transparency. Where are the two-hundred-and-sixty students? Where do they fall? Where are our staff? How are we reaching them? I also had the opportunity to have an optional ELL educator meeting on November 3rd. We also have another one scheduled later in the year, but that was wonderful. It was a time for power professionals, and tutors, and teachers, and any other people who were able to come to meet and talk about the ELLs. And I, again, presented that presentation to them, we talked about those numbers. I also sent out a follow-up survey, and they were really surprised to see the number of Ls. Again, people are used to working in their silos, and now I want them to see, we are working with our individual schools or grade levels, but really, we're part of one whole community. So, it was informative for them to see what the school next door has, or what grade levels the ELLs are most prominent in or not. We facilitated our very first parent meeting, which was just held last week on March 5th. We also have a few future dates for the remainder of the school year coming up. That was phenomenal. Some of the parents were here a little bit earlier, I'm sorry that they weren't able to stay. But, again, they were there, we had a translator available. I presented, again, those numbers to the parents, so they could see where the students were in the district. And then I was also appointed to serve on that advisory council, which is exciting, because I'm there representing Southbridge. We're a small community, but we're a strong community, and so to be on that council and be serving as an advisor, sharing information, and I even had a teacher just ask me, there's a meeting next week, if she could attend with me, and I said, sure, we'll carpool together. So, Southbridge teachers are taking interest, and we're going together, so I'm excited about that. And evaluating and improving instructional practices, I've definitely had the opportunity to collaborate with Mike Myers, the sped director, and we also had a Department of Education representative come out to Southbridge and meet with us. This is a person who has a new position, and she is basically working with the English learners who identify with learning disabilities across the whole state of Massachusetts. Mike and I had her come out, and we took a look at the number in Southbridge. It's very high, we needed to find out why. Why do we have so many students identify with learning disabilities, and what can we do about it? So, we started that with the goal of reducing the numbers of English learners identify with learning disability. So, that is a work in process, and there's more to come. And out of that particular meeting, we actually have devised an ELL sped parent advisory meeting, where we've invited certain parents to serve, so you have to be a parent of an English learner who has a learning disability. So, it'll be a more small intimate group, but we really want to talk about the ways those students are identified and receiving services, and what all of that means. And that, we have two meetings scheduled for this year coming up, one in April and one in May. I've had the opportunity to participate on six different district learning walks, which have been very informative. I've also visited a number of classrooms independently. I've met with teachers specifically around what the integrated service model looks like. I've actually shadowed an ELL teacher, because, again, what does it look like for someone day-to-day? What it looks like on paper is sometimes very different from what it looks like when you're with that teacher, so that's been good. And I've had a number of meetings with principals around just about anything you can come up with, and they're good. We leave the meetings tired, we're all sweating, but it's good, and just like what you said, we shake hands, because, you know, we're on the same team, and we're really working together. We don't always have to agree, but we do have the common focus of how can we improve instruction for English learners in Southbridge, okay? Becoming compliant with state and federal mandates. Julie Fields, the data manager, and I established a place in I-PASS where we could actually log and record the number of FLEPP students, and FLEPP is an acronym for Former Limited English Proficient. So, students who are formerly English learners, they've reached a level of English proficiency, they're no longer in need of language support services, but we have to monitor them for two years. So, now we have a place in I-PASS, and I remember in my interview asking about that. So, I was really happy to quickly get that established, because we have to know who those students are, we have to have a list, we have to monitor them, and provide support if needed. So, that's done. Also, assisting with the transition to the new Language Proficiency Assessment, which is going to be implemented the fall of 2012. Massachusetts will be becoming part of a consortium, and that's going to change that Language Proficiency Assessment greatly. So, working with Southbridge to kind of get up to speed with that. There are very few people in Massachusetts who have that knowledge, and I mentioned before that I come from a state that's used it for the last seven years, so we're in a good place. A couple of other reports that are in progress, and pretty much, things are on track. Lastly, for any future goals, or just some projections, just sitting and listening in, definitely continuing with that parent involvement, which we already have scheduled. And also, some community programs that also support and include English learners, such as the summer reading program at the library, and also some community service projects. Specifically, I had the opportunity to attend a fashion event at UMass Amherst, but it was actually started in a high school, and it's a fundraiser that raises funds for batted women. And we thought, wow, wouldn't that be great in the new facility, to do something like that in Southbridge, and include neighboring high school students? But, again, having it here in our beautiful facility. So, things like that are part of this as well. Also, did you see those young ladies up here, speaking English and Spanish? I just want to put the plug in for that literacy in their native language is so very important. And if, maybe not next year or the year after, but really like a long-term goal for Southbridge, looking at some advanced-level Spanish classes, Spanish for Spanish speakers, because literacy in your native language will help transfer literacy in English. So, being able to speak a language doesn't mean you're literate in it, okay? So, really hitting all four domains. Are you able to speak, write, read, and listen in English and whatever your native language is? So, with that percentage of Spanish-speaking students, it might be something that Southbridge wants to look at. And this would be a credit-bearing course, of course. And then, lastly, attention to the young learners, birth to age five. I had the opportunity back in August to go introduce myself to the Head Start program here. And, again, there are a number of English learners, three- and four-year-olds, that are here in our pre-K. We don't serve English learners at that age, it's not a mandate, but already, I'm working with our curriculum secretary, and we know who they are. So, if they're in our pre-K program, we know if their native language is not English. So, already getting a head start on who they are and how we might be able to service them. And, again, lastly, any and all other duties and responsibilities assigned to me by my superintendent. Thank you so much.
Questions, comments? Dr. Oler?
Hi, thank you very much, it's nice to see you still have all this enthusiasm about you. Good for you, and good for us. I have more of a question, you might be able to help me out with that. I have heard in the past, I wish I remembered the community in which it happened. It was a high, I guess you'd call it, English language learner community as well, and I think it was Hispanic, high Hispanic demographics as well, maybe one of the Boston towns, I'm not sure. But they had something called the Parent University.
Ah.
You familiar?
I have heard of that, not necessarily in Massachusetts, but in other states, yes.
Other places, yeah, and one of the young ladies brought it up, she didn't bring it up, but to me, it came to mind when she said, I'm going to repeat this in Spanish, because there's many of us out here, many of the folks that speak only Spanish. I can tell you that if I were in a foreign place, and I spoke only English, it would be a disadvantage to me. It would be a disadvantage to my, the children in my family, if at home, we only spoke English, but the community around us was in a foreign language. I spoke to the young ladies tonight, too, about community and parents, and that was part of what I was speaking about. Do you have any thoughts on that? I guess what I understood about the Parent University was an opportunity for parents as well. I don't know where funding comes from, or how it gets put together.
Sure.
An opportunity for parents as well, who are also limited with their English language, to become more proficient. And the way I understand it, when both kids and parents were doing it, sometimes the kids even tutored.
Yes.
I don't know if it was in the school setting or in the home setting, again, I wish it was a number of years ago, I'm sure I remember it.
There are definitely opportunities to build that in as part of our literacy plan through outside funds, parent involvement with the Title III grant specifically, that supplements, not supplants. It adds to your school district's program, and actually, we've worked on a couple of items for this summer. For example, we were looking at possibly having student and parents come together to go on educational field trips.
Yeah.
Okay, so really getting the students to experience things outside of Southbridge. I mean, just Worcester, up the street, up the road, has all kinds of resources. I thought about the Science Museum, but including parents as part of that, to, again, begin to build a rapport before we rush it and say, let's learn English. So, that can be there, but also authentic opportunities to use the language, which is very important. Let me give you another example. There was a woman who wanted to express interest to serve on the ELL/sped Advisory Council, and she's taking an English class, and she approached me, and even with, you know, very moderate level of English, she expressed that she wanted to come to the meeting, and for me to call her, and that she did have a daughter with a learning disability. That took a lot of courage. It really took a lot of courage for her to step up and use her English to communicate that to me.
Did you comment that, are you aware that there's potentially grant money for a...
Yes, I'm aware of that, yes.
Like that?
Yeah, and we can build those things, and, again, they're baby steps, you know, but if there's an interest there, we definitely can build it in.
I think it would be essential to the progress of the whole ELL program to have family members, parents specifically, who are also limited. I can't imagine that it wouldn't do anything but help everybody, the parents, the teachers, the families, the district.
Well, that's where I first met some of the parents, was at the library. We were at the library for an unrelated meeting. There was a lunch break, instead of having my lunch, I went over and spoke to the parents with my, you know, broken Spanish. But they were already there in an adult ESL class in the middle of the day. So, they are there, they are committed.
I appreciate that, thanks for listening.
Great, and I had a message for the parents, but do you mind if I just still say it? Because this is recorded, and they may watch later, right?
Absolutely, yes, too.
Where's the camera? Where should I look?
Right, straight ahead.
Great, okay.
But not directly.
Yo tiem bien estoy trabajando mucho para sus hijos. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I just said that I was working really hard for the children.
There's no doubt that you are. Any other questions? Dr. D'Amico?
I would like to go back to the, briefly, if you may, to your strategies to improve instructional practices. Besides the things that you were mentioning, one item that I'm missing, and I miss frequently, is what are we doing in the classroom? What are we changing in the classroom in order for our students to learn better, to learn faster, to learn in an integrated manner, to...
Right, right.
Whatever, part of instructional practices.
Really, in my six months, I'd have to say is the awareness, okay? Just starting with the awareness that the English learners are there, they are participating in content area classes, and really increasing our PD, Professional Development, I apologize for the acronyms, that are aligned with English language development in content area classes. So, students are learning English all day long, not in a fifty-minute block. It's in their math class, it's in their literature class, it's in their science, it's in their art class. Also, that's addressing the academic rigor, right? What's the expectation? The real focus of the need that English language development and all the four domains of language acquisition, speaking, writing, reading, and listening, are addressed in all content areas by all teachers. So, that's, again, a work in process, but that awareness has been, I've really sensed the impact of that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Cooper.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further, Ms. Davis?
Yes, just briefly, I have had a meeting with the staff at Eastford Road, and I had a meeting yesterday with the staff at Charlton Street School, and I have a meeting later this week with the staff at West Street School, to kind of cover the process for how the teachers will be moving around with the two new one-through-fives and the reconfiguration. We have a form that they will be asked to fill out. We've explained this to them, that they, they're going to have a couple of options of maybe saying they want to stay in their grade level, but don't care what building they're in, or they really want to stay in their building, but don't really care what grade level they're in. So, then, what we'll do is, once we get those forms back, we'll actually be able to identify what teachers will be in what buildings, and then that'll help us stage the actual move of equipment and furniture and those kind of things from one building to another. And at the same time, we're working on the distribution of students between the two buildings, and how to do that and create logical attendance zones. And in the middle of all this, we're doing a new bus bid that will actually take all this into consideration as well. So, there's a lot of work that's being done right now, that's sort of behind the scenes, that nobody sees, but it's actually going on, and once we have sort of the established zones, we'll know what kids will be going where, and we'll know how many grade levels, classes will have each grade level in every building, and then we'll know what, how many teachers we need at that grade level, and then there's a cycle that will happen very, very quickly, once we have that, those attendance zones set. So, right now, our target date to get a lot of those things done is spring break, the third week in April. So, we really think we'll be ahead of that, but our commitment is to have that done by the, by spring break.
Any questions? Okay. Seeing none, reported businessman, Mr. Wiggins?
I'm going to pass down a document that I'm going to speak to in a few minutes, but as I begin, let me talk about the school fiber connection update. We've been working with Charter Communications, Charter Cable, on a plan to bring fiber optic connections to all of the schools. And we were able to work with our E-Rate consultant, and with Charter, and with our tech people, with our technology consultant, and basically, we were able to create a plan where we'll be able to connect all of the schools with fiber, which means a couple of different things. But first off and foremost, I want to say we were able to do it at no impact to the budget. What that means is, next year, all of our school buildings will be connected with fiber. That means we will be able to have, for data recovery, we will be able to have an off-site backup for disaster recovery. It means that down the road, we can look at voice-over IP for all of our schools. We have built in capacity for growth, so we think we've got enough for, and this is, we're kind of looking at it sort of like a five-year plan. we're kind of looking at it sort of like a five-year plan, but it's also a very scalable type of technology. So we're very, very pleased with the way that all came about. We did get it into our E-Rate application, so we will be able to start collecting the E-Rate next year on it, so. And I want to thank the Finance Subcommittee for, you know, sort of giving me the go-ahead to sign the contract, and the full committee for helping us out. Again, E-Rate is sort of a grant program, but we really appreciated your help on that. Secondly, before I get to the document I passed out, some of the committee, if not all the committee, is aware that one of the bids that went out recently for technology for digital signage and for the video distribution technology in the new school, came in considerably higher than what we had budgeted. We had budgeted approximately $100,000 for that technology. The low bid came in at $147,000. I'm pleased to report that we entered into negotiations with the low bidder, which we can do under state law. They worked very hard. Our technology consultant, Bob Pacelli, was very important to helping this process move along, and I'm pretty sure I will be recommending to the Building Committee a revamped, but still a V-Bric digital signage, video distribution system that meets all of the goals of the original bid, all of what we wanted to do in the original bid, and the price will be $103,000. You may recall, we saved some money on the voice lift system, about $9,000 in that, so again, overall, right now, we're still looking to be slightly below the budget for this first round of technology that we've bid out for the new school. So I'm very pleased to be able to say that, and again, a lot of hard work by a lot of people to make that happen, so we're very pleased on that. The third item is the Finance, excuse me, the Budget Facilities and Transportation Subcommittee, I'll get it right, asked me to give a little budget history, and they were very kind when I said that I really probably couldn't get it out for the Friday packet, it would be better if I handed it out. I'm hoping that the committee members understand why it takes a little bit more time than a simple budget history. And this is something that I think the superintendent and I have talked about, perhaps doing a more formal presentation at maybe an upcoming meeting. But just to kind of run down very quickly these two pages for you, the top box, if you will, on the first page, really deals with the revenues. And I didn't detail every town revenue, but I tried to highlight some key areas. And you'll see that below, where it says total revenues, I picked out a couple of key areas. One would be property tax revenue, and one would be education aid, to show you what the increases have been over the five-year period, 2008, fiscal year 2008 through fiscal year 2012, for both of those things, just to give you a perspective of the revenue, some key revenues that come into play when we talk about budgeting. And then the box below, you will see a little bit more detail for expenditures. And again, there are some differentiated areas that certainly will be of key interest to the school committee members. And again, this is sort of the base data. Now, on the second page, I guess is probably where it's going to be more interesting to lots of different folks, because this is where we track some key areas as far as increases. At the very top, you'll see the overall town budget increase in dollars and percentage year to year. And then at the very end, you'll see the five-year totals, and you'll see the average increase in both dollars and percentage. And then as you work below that, you'll see I did the town operating budget, I did the Southbridge school budget, I did health insurance, I did Bay Path, and I did the school choice, charter school numbers. I've always found that these are kind of very interesting numbers to look at when you break them out. For the public's sake, I would just say that over the five-year period from fiscal year eight to fiscal year 12, the average budget increase was 1.26%. And even with low inflation, that did not keep pace with inflation. I apologize that I didn't actually have the time to put in the CPI and the Educational Price Index, both of which, again, are relevant statistics. When you're kind of looking at these numbers, we will get those numbers for you. But again, this is just a quick snapshot to kind of give you an idea of what your history has been, using 2007, by the way, as a base year, that's why you don't see any numbers there. And we can probably go back further, but it is gonna take us a little bit of work. 2006 was when the KVS accounting system was implemented, and so going back and getting some of that old history, it's, it may be in the, what is it called downstairs? The Milk, the Milk Room? Yeah, it may be in the Milk Room, so I've not yet gone to the Milk Room, I may have to do that. Questions?
Questions, comments?
Terry, thanks for getting this over to us as quickly as you did. I know it was only last week we had talked about it, so I appreciate the fact that you did get these over to us. Some interesting things. Now, on that school choice assessment for next fiscal year, is that the cherry sheet estimated?
Yes.
Estimated?
That's the cherry, that's the cherry sheet estimate, estimate.
So it's gone down from last year, but it's still a high number, right?
Yeah, it's, it's still over $1 million. And if I may editorialize for a second very briefly, you know, I am a firm believer that the more investment you obviously make in the local school district, the more you impact that number going down.
Okay. And again, I know we've talked about it in the past, and I'd like to see, moving forward is identification of the students and where they went and why they went, so it's something I'd like to work on in the next month or so.
Yep. Okay, any other questions, comments? Thank you, Terry.
You're welcome.
Moving on, School Committee actions. A, vote to accept an anonymous donation of $5,000 to Eastford Road School. Is there a motion?
No.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Seeing none. Roll call.
Mrs. Woodruff?
Yes.
Mr. De Gregorio?
Yes.
Dr. D'Amico?
Yes.
Mr. Jovan?
Yes.
Mr. Lozo?
Yes.
Dr. O'Leary?
Yes.
Mrs. Principi?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Unanimous of all present. Yes, thank you to the anonymous person, so if you know who the anonymous person is, send them a thank you note.
We will.
I'm sure you know, they just requested to be anonymous, so thank them on behalf of the school district. Item B, B, vote to approve overnight field trip request to Cape Cod.
So we'll...
Discussion? The only point that I want to make in regards to this and the follow-up request is something that we've brought up in the Budget Subcommittee for the public to know, that the thought of leasing or purchasing our own bus would certainly aid in some of these specific trips, that if we had our own bus, at least one bus for the school district, to be able to transport kids and transport to Gillette and other activities.
Yeah, and I do believe, actually, in your current proposal, you've not proposed a full-size bus, but you have proposed at least two vans, and even the two vans could conceivably help with something like this.
Right. But talk was also one bus, possibly some way down the road as well, so.
Dr. Oler?
No, sir.
Oh, okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Mr. De Gregorio?
Yes.
Dr. D'Amico?
Yes.
Mr. Jovan?
Yes.
Mr. Lozo?
Yes.
Dr. O'Leary?
Yes.
Mrs. Principi?
Yes.
Mrs. Woodruff?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Motion unanimously of all present. Item C, vote to approve the late-night field trip with private transportation to Gillette Stadium. Is there a motion?
So we'll...
Discussion? Mr. Lozo?
Discussion, pretending to have brought up that we, I gotta violate the policy. These microphones are terrible tonight. Someone's gotta call Paul's autos, find out the combination. The, do you want to waive the, after the vote, do you want to amend this now? How do you want to go with it?
First, I think I have some questions about liability. I mean, I'm not sure, you know, to waive a policy really is a change of policy, I think, or may take a two-thirds vote. I'm not sure how that would be to waive a policy. My biggest concern is liability-wise. If we were to approve a trip and say, you know, "Our policy is that you can't have private transportation, but we waive it in this instance and something, God forbid, happened," I believe we would be a possibility of opening ourselves up to possible litigation because, as Mr. De Gregorio and I know in the insurance world, auto insurance world, they go after everybody, and we would be at the top of the list for the pockets. So I have a concern on the liability, and Mr. Wiggins, if you can elaborate on that and what your thoughts are?
I would say that it is not an uncommon practice to allow, in certain situations, parent transportation. What we require, and at the advice of our insurance company, by the way, is, we do require proof of insurance. I want to say, and it's now blanking, I want to say it's 100, 300 minimum, and I may have those numbers wrong or backwards. The other thing we require, at the advice of the insurance company, is driver's record. And so we actually have the right to say to somebody, "You're not going to be allowed to transport." We also maintain that every child who is going to be transported in one of these vehicles, there has to be a signed release, they have to be seatbelted. So there's a number of requirements that, if you do this, that we would require, and again, these are pretty standard requirements that I've used in other districts and other school business administrators use.
Okay. Mrs. Woodruff?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. My concern, too, is the liability, but also my concern is if we choose to waive a policy this evening for this one trip, then we're going to be asked many, perhaps, other times to waive the policy, and I don't think it's a good idea to start doing that. If we do have the money in a revolving account or somewhere that we can come up with a day bus for these children, I'd be more than happy to be voting it tonight, but I don't believe I can vote it with waiving a policy. Thank you.
Mr. Lozo?
I was gonna ask the same question. Do we have funds to supply a bus for the children?
I think I probably could. I think in fairness to the coach involved, she was really working very hard to try and find a way to give these kids an experience that they would learn more about soccer and to try and save the district money. So I mean, I think her intentions were good. I think certainly if it's the will of the committee, that you want to have this, but you want to have, you know, you know, regular bus, transport these kids to and from, we can find the money for it.
Mr. De Gregorio?
I think, personally, I think that's the best way to go. And I really appreciate the fact that they were trying desperately for alternative transportation, but, you know, someone signs a waiver, waivers don't really mean all that much to me. I really, I really, really would like to see these kids go, though. And so I'm, for one, if we do have the money, I would absolutely vote for them to go that way.
Mr. Lozo?
This isn't a new trip. We've done trips to Gillette before, and the district paid for the transportation. It's just that I didn't know what the flavor was. I mean, I feel really comfortable with paying for the transportation, the revolving, the transportation budget, or whatever, however we do it. But I remember on Chapel and Wood before, that they went to the athletic workout area there for an all-around, I think that were local people were picking on some, like, the Patriot organization, which did a great deed for the town and the kids, and the only way to supply the transportation, but I feel much safer with the bus, trust me. If that's the feeling of the committee, then let's just pay for the transportation.
Did you have something, Mr. Woodruff?
Yes, based on that, I'd like to amend this motion. You don't have to.
No, I don't think you have to amend the motion. I can approve it and provide, and change the transportation to be school-paid. I don't think you need to amend the motion.
That's what I wanted to say. I want the private transportation removed.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Yep, yep.
I want to say, vote to approve late-night field trip with transportation provided by the school department to Gillette Stadium.
Do you have that second? Motion and second? The amendment? Okay. Any discussion on the amendment? Mr. Lozo, seconded. Mrs. Principi and Mr. Lozo. Right. Any further discussion? Seeing none, and a vote on the amendment? Roll call.
Mr. Jovan?
Yes.
Mr. Lozo?
Yes.
Dr. O'Leary?
Yes.
Mrs. Principi?
Yes.
Mrs. Woodruff?
Yes.
Mr. De Gregorio?
Yes.
Seven yes.
On the main motion as amended. Any further discussion on that? Seeing none, roll call.
Mr. Jovan?
Yes.
Mr. Lozo?
Yes.
Dr. O'Leary?
Yes.
Mrs. Principi?
Yes.
Mrs. Woodruff?
Yes.
Mr. De Gregorio?
Yes.
Dr. D'Amico?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Motion carries. I hope they have a good time. I'm sure they will. Okay, moving on. Vote to approve and adopt the concussion policy filed JJIF-r. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the adoption of the concussion policy. Mrs. Woodruff?
Yes, we haven't had the third reading. We need to have the third reading first tonight and waive it and then vote it. So we have to make another amendment to have the third and final reading before voting.
Okay.
So I'll make the amendment that we have the third reading of the concussion policy before...
No, you just wave it.
And then waive it. Third reading and...
This is the third, third reading, so.
This would be the third reading first and then vote.
Okay. Or you could simply add to that and waive the third reading.
Okay, then we will add.
If you want to amend that, to just waive the third reading.
Let's do that.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. All right. So the amendment is to waive the third reading. So it's vote to approve and adopt the concussion policy and to waive the third reading. Okay, so that's an amendment?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Discussion on the amendment? Okay, roll call on the amendment?
Mr. Lozo?
Yes.
Dr. O'Leary?
Yes.
Mrs. Principi?
Yes.
Mrs. Woodruff?
Yes.
Mr. De Gregorio?
Yes.
Dr. D'Amico?
Yes.
Mr. Jovan?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Now, the motion before us, vote to approve and adopt the concussion policy filed JJIF-r and waive in the third reading. Mrs. Wood...
Don't move.
Dr. D'Amico, did you have something? Okay.
I just have a technical question. I know that the R after a policy stands for regulatory or recommendation, regulation, and I think those are not voted. The policy itself doesn't have the R designation. That's a recommended implementation of the policy, but the policy itself has to, I think, be JJIF.
JJIF.
Is that what it is?
JJIF.
No R.
No R.
Okay.
Type O.
Huh? Type O on that?
Type O.
Okay. And this is the third reading. We've had the, uh, this is something that's mandated by, uh, the Department of Ed.
Department of Health.
Department of Health, and, uh, we've had the policies available for people to read. Um, so. Seeing no further discussion, roll call.
Dr. O'Leary?
Yes.
Mrs. Principay?
Yes.
Mrs. Woodruff?
Yes.
Dr. D'Amico?
Yes.
Mr. Jovian?
Yes.
Mr. Lazo?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Okay, move on to unfinished business. Does anyone have unfinished business? I just, um, Mrs. Benoit's not here from the high school, so just a couple of activities that I'm aware of that have occurred at the high school in the last, uh, a couple of weeks. First, our congratulations out to our Southbridge High Boys and Girls Teams for advancing in the districts. They put on a great, uh, showing in the districts, and we look forward to seeing them next year. The girls went out after the, in the second, uh, round. The boys made it, uh, a little bit further and lost a, a great game to Littleton. A hard-fought game, uh, they were up most of the game, and, uh, it was a good game. Secondly, uh, for people out in the audience, Southbridge High School has a show choir that this is their first year as a show choir, and they had a competition this weekend down in Somerset, Mass. And, uh, I think we should be very proud of the young men, men and women. Uh, one of the young gentlemen is actually, uh, the starting quarterback for the football team, so it's a lot like, if you watch Glee, it's like seeing the kids from Glee out there. They got a silver this weekend. It's their second silver in show choir competition, and from my understanding, uh, that's pretty much unheard of for first-year show choirs, that, uh, they're able to, um, perform to that level, and that's kudos to Miss Becky Bousier, who's, uh, heading that program with volunteer efforts from her husband, uh, Greg, uh, Bubba Bousier. Um, it's amazing how many different show choirs he's involved with, uh, and I guess the kids were just like thirteen points off of a gold medal in that competition. So, for, uh, and, and the judge's, uh, comments there were that, uh, they were very impressed by our kids' performance, um, especially one that had seen them earlier at the Shepherd Hill Show Choir Festival, in which they had gotten a silver and, and then saw them in Somerset in their, uh, development. Uh, the next thing is, um, I want to congratulate the Southbridge High School varsity math team. The varsity math team has placed first in the district.
Wow.
And won their last meet, and I believe it's been a long time since we've had a math team perform to that, so kudos to, uh, uh, I believe it's Mr. Callen and Miss Retundo, uh, that are heading up that program. So, that's great to see too. So, again, those positive things, uh, that we try to accentuate in the school system. So, that, that has been great, and hopefully, they finish out the year strong, and, uh, thank you to all, uh, all the kids out there that are doing great things. Anybody else have anything on unfinished business? Dr. O'Leary?
None unfinished business. Jack, um, just, uh, I'm, I'm very impressed with the, the math team, and, um, uh, it's a nice thing to hear, a welcome, a welcome advance, or, or welcome, uh, accolades. So, with that, I'd like to, uh, go off on a tangent a little bit and, um, just, uh, give the math team, uh, my own version of, um, a cheer that, uh, you might, uh, find funny, and it, it goes like this. Secant tangent, cosine sine, three point one four one five nine. Go math team.
There you go.
Good job, good job, guys. Good job.
Were you on the math team, Dr. O'Leary?
No.
No? No?
No.
And just on the show choir, uh, thing as well, because I know Helena may have wanted to announce that, the Disney, uh, dinner that was originally scheduled for two weeks ago that had to be postponed because of the kids, were in the district tournament, will be held, I believe, this Thursday night, uh, the fifteenth, at the high school fundraiser for the choir, so I'm sure Helena would have, um, presented that to us as well. So, with that, and I wish we had more information on what's going on in the elementary schools, because I would certainly doubt that, but we don't get a list of anything that goes on in those schools anymore, so that'd be great to have. All right? Um, and I know those schools used to send things up to us at the school committee, we just.
They're actually going to be starting to come present to you.
That'd be great.
I've asked them to do that, so.
Okay. Moving on to new business. Next regular school committee meeting will be held on March twenty-seventh, two thousand and twelve, in Council Chambers. Any other new business? Dr. D'Amico?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I'm, uh, still quite distraught over the presentation that we have had from the Department of, uh, Education, uh, a couple of meetings ago, and I would like to, uh, I don't know if that needs to be a line item, but I would really like to discuss the performance of the Superintendent's Office in the light of that report tonight. I don't think we have had an opportunity as a school committee to really, really talk about it. It was reactionary after the presentation. It made us all very, very concerned, and I would like to discuss that tonight.
Okay. So, informal motion to add that to the agenda, to just discuss the DSE report under new business? It could have went under, you know, old business or new business, but.
Yes. Uh, in particular, the performance of the Superintendent's Office in respect to the, um, the DS, DASE report.
Is there a second on that?
Second.
Okay. Discussion? Go ahead, back. There was a second? Oh, we have roll call on that to add that to the gen- I'm sorry.
Mrs. Principay?
No.
Mrs. Woodruff?
No.
Mr. DeGogio?
No.
Dr. D'Amico?
Yes.
Mr. Jovian?
Yes, for the purposes of discussion, to see what, what is on Mr. D'Amico's mind.
Okay. Mr. Lazo?
Yes, purpose of discussion.
Dr. O'Leary?
Yes.
I'm sorry, sir?
Yes.
Four yes, three no.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I, I, I really think that we need to, we need to, uh, discuss this in public, particularly our individual reactions, uh, you know, in, in regard to the report, but more importantly, um, I think the performance of Superintendent's Office in regard to this report, that, that can have lasting consequences in terms of, uh, further damage to the image of the district that already, that already exists. We have been declared, uh, underperforming school, uh, and I don't think that our non-compliance with the state is really helping, uh, helping put us on the better path, and I'm, I'm really very nervous about, uh, what our non-compliance with the state requirements in terms of improvement can have long-term in our district. And I would like to hear from my, from my fellow members what they think about. I felt ambushed. I felt completely uninformed going into the meeting. There was no, uh, advance notice coming of either the process, uh, what was to, to be expected. And so, I'll, I'll just open with that, and, um, I'll give the floor back.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Uli has asked me to just take a quick break, just, and I, I'll respect that, just to confer for a minute, uh, so we'll recess for a few minutes, and we'll reconvene, okay?
All set? Okay. I'll reconvene, uh, regular session of the school committee. Discussion before this, um, was a, uh, and I'd had an opportunity to speak to Mr. Ely, um, just to clarify exactly what has, um, what the purposes of Mrs., uh, Dr. Domingo's, uh, request is. The request specifically, um, is relative, I believe, to the D E S E report and performance. Uh, whereas we do have a contract with the superintendent, um, for performance evaluation. So I just want to clarify and make sure that I'm certain of this publicly, specifically, and here we are at a crossroads, definitely with open meeting law, is that all issues relative to performance have to be, um, in open session. An overall performance evaluation in, in contractors to be negotiated with, uh, the superintendent, which we were right at that timeline, which was going to be brought up later on, um, to set that process in, in motion because we do have, uh, to have that completed, uh, within the next month. So just, just so I'm clear, are we talking specifically performance relative to D E S E report?
Yep.
Okay. Um, I believe, just for the purposes of discussion, as long as it's relative just to, you know, we all heard the, uh, issues, uh, relative to that. So just what are your thoughts on this as far as, just specifically the D E S E? Because we're not discussing overall performance. Mr. Lazlo?
Just a point of clarification. I'm, I'm not quite clear. We all know that the performance evaluation has to create a tool for us, then do an evaluation. I'm not under the impression that I'm doing an evaluation. If I'm doing, if we're having a discussion on D E, D E S E and what went down with D E S E, I'm all good with it. Um, but this is not, if this is an evaluation, then we have to follow the process of creating the tool to evaluate. But if, if we're talking about just D E S E and, and what went down and, and the ins and outs of what happened that night, um, I, I know I made my point perfectly under clear, understood and clear to D E S E and, uh, people that were here. Um, I'm not happy. I'm not happy with, uh, what happened and what they said. I'm not happy on our behalf on what we did. Um, we pay a lot of money to do a lot of things and educate a lot of kids in this, in this district. In some areas, I think we're strong, in some areas, I think we're weak. And I think that that is basically why we try to strengthen up and, and do things to, to, uh, to make it right with curriculum, with management, leadership, uh, teachers, professional development. It's such a big, uh, broad field to play on. So, um, as far as evaluation, if, if anybody's planning to evaluate, I'm not going to take part. But if we're going to talk about, you want to talk about D E S E and, and what happened? I don't have, I'm still, I don't have a problem with it.
Mr. Degogor?
I second that. Uh, two weeks ago during our last meeting, we had a gentleman in who was, uh, pretty much spearheading a lot of this. He explained quite a bit of how, uh, the people who stood there four weeks ago were pretty much, uh, not exactly, you know, toeing the line that they presented to us. Uh, they dropped the ball quite a few number of times. They didn't show up when they were supposed to, and they also didn't meet a whole hell of a lot of deadlines and left a lot of things vague so that nobody could follow them. So I, I agree with Mr. Lazlo. If this is going to be, uh, simple rehashing of what we did last two weeks ago and the two weeks before that, okay. But if this is coming down to any kind of a, an evaluation, I don't want any part of it.
Mr. Lazlo?
Again, if, if, now is not the time to evaluate. I mean, maybe it was a choice of words that made, uh, made it look like it's going to be an evaluation. I didn't take it that way, um, and I didn't understand it that way, but that's why we called for just a clarification to say, you know, if we're going to do this, let's go create the evaluation tool and do the evaluation, which this is the season we do it and, uh, and we take care of it. But from what I'm understanding, it's not an evaluation. So, you know, I don't have a problem with what we're going to do.
Dr. O'Leary?
Yeah, uh, from my, from my own, uh, point of view, uh, you talk about an evaluation tool has to be put together and all that. I certainly hope that when that comes that, um, it allows us to have a discussion about certain issues when it is not under the umbrella of any valuation. Uh, you have to be able to, uh, have a back and forth, uh, pros and cons, what did and didn't happen, uh, in order to, to move forward and just for the sake of discussion. Uh, so I, I hope that we are not impotent to, to be able to do that, uh, under the, under the, the auspices, auspices, I guess, of, uh, evaluation rather than, uh, the ability to discuss and go over what, what happened in a certain situation, guys.
Yeah, I would echo that. I mean, I know specifically the motion is to discuss D E S E by Dr. Domingo. Certainly we have two distinct issues that are before us, evaluation and performance. And, and Dr. O'Leary, I, I share your sentiments when it comes to that evaluation piece. Mr. Degogor, I think can attest to how difficult it is to do an evaluation of a public employee. Um, we've all sat during that evaluation process, and I, I concur that it has to be a frank discussion of overall performance in whatever way this, the state has you do in an open meeting, uh, what, what's best to get everything on the table as far as, as overall performance. And I'm certainly, I'm sure the superintendent agrees that a fair evaluation instrument is important.
I, I one hundred percent agree, which is why I agreed to it in the contract to, to have a discussion, uh, and, and to settle on a mutually agreeable instrument for evaluation of the superintendent. I believe that's actually critical, uh, and, and I would welcome feedback, uh, as I always have. Uh, if you base feedback on a D E S E report that is inaccurate, I am concerned, and I will remain concerned. Am I willing to, uh, respond to, uh, something that was said in that, in that, we have responded, and I will continue to respond with the truth. Uh, and I would always do that. Uh, so I would welcome a frank discussion as well, as long as it, uh, pertains to something that may have been said in that D E S E report, uh, that was presented, uh, and the response that was presented two weeks later.
Mr. Lazlo?
This thing's getting a little bit over to the right for me. Um, I thought we were going to discuss, um, what went on with the E S E. Now, if the superintendent is handling D E S E, then he's in the discussion. If Tanya Domingo wants some answers about D E S E or whatever her opinion is on D E S E or anything else, she is entitled to that. And if we do it in public, I don't see a problem. I don't know why, um, it, it keeps, we keep talking about this. I'm not the chairman, but I'd like to, and you talked to Tanya Domingo. If her intention is to, again, to, uh, evaluate, then it's not the right, right place to evaluate somebody, right, at this point. But a situation can be dealt with, any way, shape, or manner as a committee member sees, as long as it's under the regulations of what we do in the open meeting law. And for me, when I usually have a problem with what is going on, we would vet it out as far as discussion. If you're not satisfied, there are options. If you're satisfied, there are options. So I don't know why this is, I mean, if, if, if we use the wrong word, then, then retract the word and say what you meant, uh, because I know legally that we can't evaluate. That's my only point.
That's, that's the point I was just trying to make. So, Dr. Domingo, do you, you've heard some?
Yeah, I, I, um, I don't know where to start. Uh, it has been, uh, four weeks. Uh, have we received any action plan? And yes, I was not present two weeks ago. I could not make the meeting. Uh, so what, uh, Mr. Mike Guinan presented, um, is not available to me. I have just read the minutes from the last meeting, but from the minutes, uh, that you accepted today, it did not become clear to me, uh, that there will be in any actionable way, a report or action plan be coming forward that will reassure us that we are moving in the right direction. I understand from, from, um, Mr. Ely, and, and we talked about that, he does not agree with the evaluation that they have presented, and he has a right not to agree. I'm not contesting that. Um, and if, um, the report is inaccurate, my first question would be, have you filed the complaint that the D E S E is inaccurately and based on, um, their inaccurate reporting, uh, painting our district in such a way that, uh, that is completely not favorable to us? That would be my first question.
I have spoken to D E S E, uh, yes, and they're, uh, in terms of an action plan, I think at the last school committee meeting, when Mr. Guinan presented, uh, what our next steps were, uh, he was asked to come back, uh, and present before the, the D E S E folks came back in April to present the next quarterly plan. He, he actually is scheduled to come here and present to you again. Uh, we will, in the meantime, uh, be finalizing this week, if not early next week, the new revision, I think this is draft five, uh, of the accelerated improvement plan, uh, that he's been working on with another consultant from D E S E, um, separate from, from my administration, using the things that we already had in our plan and the new framework that they ask us to put it under, uh, and, and then this other resource that they threw in. Uh, so we will have that to you, uh, when we submit it to D E S E, which, which is due April 2nd, but it should be in, I think, probably about, uh, probably a week or so before that.
Um, did, did I notice correctly in one of the, maybe in the minutes, that there was another meeting scheduled with, uh, Dr. Bonda, I believe, uh, a few days ago?
Yes, we had a meeting with Dr. Bonda. We have a monthly meeting now. Uh, those monthly meetings started in December. Uh, just so everybody knows and we'll revamp a little bit of what Doc, what Mr. Guinan said, uh, Dr. Bonda was, she replaced another gentleman who was assigned to be our monitor. We met with him in July. We were the first school district in the state to actually meet with a monitor. That did not go as D E S E had planned. And then our next meeting was with Dr. Bonda, uh, and Ava Mitchell and a few other people from D E S E, which was in November, uh, to talk about where we go next. And then we had a meeting, our first quarterly meeting and our first monthly meeting since July, we had it, and I think it was December 15th. And that is where the report, which supposedly covered six months, was actually generated, the quarterly report, which was presented to the school committee in Gi, in, in February, was actually given to
DESE and people that were here, I'm not happy. I'm not happy with what happened and what they said. I'm not happy on our behalf on what we did. We pay a lot of money to do a lot of things and educate a lot of kids in this district. In some areas, I think we're strong, in some areas, I think we're weak. And I think that that is basically why we try to strengthen up and do things to make it right with curriculum, with management, leadership, teachers, professional development. It's such a big, broad field to play on. So as far as evaluation, if anybody's planning to evaluate, I'm not going to take part. But if we're going to talk about, you want to talk about DESE and what happened? I don't have, I'm still, I don't have a problem with it.
Mr. DeGogor.
I second that. Two weeks ago during our last meeting, we had a gentleman in who was pretty much spearheading a lot of this. He explained quite a bit of how the people who stood there four weeks ago were pretty much not exactly, you know, toeing the line that they presented to us. They dropped the ball quite a few number of times. They didn't show up when they were supposed to, and they also didn't meet a whole hell of a lot of deadlines and left a lot of things vague so that nobody could follow them. So I agree with Mr. Lozal. If this is going to be a simple rehashing of what we did last two weeks ago and the two weeks before that, okay. But if this is coming down to any kind of an evaluation, I don't want any part of it.
Mr. Lozal.
Again, if, now is not the time to evaluate. I mean, maybe it was a choice of words that made it look like it's going to be an evaluation. I didn't take it that way, and I didn't understand it that way, but that's why we called for just a clarification to say, you know, if we're going to do this, let's go create the evaluation tool and do the evaluation, which this is the season we do it and take care of it. But from what I'm understanding, it's not an evaluation, so, you know, I don't have a problem with what we're going to do.
Dr. O'Leary.
Yeah, from my own point of view, you talk about an evaluation tool has to be put together and all that. I certainly hope that when that comes that it allows us to have a discussion about certain issues when it is not under the umbrella of any valuation. You have to be able to have a back and forth, pros and cons, what did and didn't happen in order to move forward and just for the sake of discussion. So I hope that we are not impotent to be able to do that under the auspices, I guess, of evaluation rather than the ability to discuss and go over what happened in a certain situation, guys.
Yeah, I would echo that. I mean, I know specifically the motion is to discuss DESE by Dr. Domenico. Certainly, we have two distinct issues that are before us, evaluation and performance. And Dr. O'Leary, I share your sentiments when it comes to that evaluation piece. Mr. DeGogor, I think, can attest to how difficult it is to do an evaluation of a public employee. We've all sat during that evaluation process, and I concur that it has to be a frank discussion of overall performance in whatever way the state has you do in an open meeting, what's best to get everything on the table as far as overall performance. And I'm certainly, I'm sure the superintendent agrees that a fair evaluation instrument is important.
I 100% agree, which is why I agreed to it in the contract, to have a discussion and to settle on a mutually agreeable instrument for evaluation of the superintendent. I believe that's actually critical, and I would welcome feedback, as I always have. If you base feedback on a DESE report that is inaccurate, I am concerned, and I will remain concerned. Am I willing to respond to something that was said in that? We have responded, and I will continue to respond with the truth, and I would always do that. So I would welcome a frank discussion as well, as long as it pertains to something that may have been said in that DESE report that was presented and the response that was presented two weeks later.
Mr. Lozal.
This thing's getting a little bit over to the right for me. I thought we were going to discuss what went on with DESE. Now, if the superintendent is handling DESE, then he's in the discussion. If Tanya Domenico wants some answers about DESE or whatever her opinion is on DESE or anything else, she is entitled to that. And if we do it in public, I don't see a problem. I don't know why it keeps, we keep talking about this. I'm not the chairman, but I'd like to, and you talked to Tanya Domenico. If her intention is to, again, to evaluate, then it's not the right place to evaluate somebody right at this point. But a situation can be dealt with any way, shape, or manner as a committee member sees, as long as it's under the regulations of what we do in the open meeting law. And for me, when I usually have a problem with what is going on, we would vet it out as far as discussion. If you're not satisfied, there are options. If you're satisfied, there are options. So I don't know why this is, I mean, if we use the wrong word, then retract the word and say what you meant, because I know legally that we can't evaluate. That's my only point.
That's the point I was just trying to make. So Dr. Domenico, you've heard some...
Yeah, I don't know where to start. It has been four weeks. Have we received any action plan? And yes, I was not present two weeks ago. I could not make the meeting, so what Mr. Mike Guinan presented is not available to me. I have just read the minutes from the last meeting, but from the minutes that you accepted today, it did not become clear to me that there will be in any actionable way a report or action plan be coming forward that will reassure us that we are moving in the right direction. I understand from Mr. Ely, and we talked about it, he does not agree with the evaluation that they have presented, and he has a right not to agree. I'm not contesting that. And if the report is inaccurate, my first question would be, have you filed a complaint that the DESE is inaccurately and based on their inaccurate reporting, painting our district in such a way that is completely not favorable to us? That would be my first question.
I have spoken to DESE, yes, and they're, in terms of an action plan, I think at the last school committee meeting, when Mr. Guinan presented what our next steps were, he was asked to come back and present before the DESE folks came back in April to present the next quarterly plan. He actually is scheduled to come here and present to you again. We will, in the meantime, be finalizing this week, if not early next week, the new revision, I think this is draft five of the accelerated improvement plan, that he's been working on with another consultant from DESE, separate from my administration, using the things that we already had in our plan and the new framework that they ask us to put it under, and then this other resource that they threw in. So we will have that to you when we submit it to DESE, which is due April 2nd, but it should be in, I think, probably about, probably a week or so before that.
Did I notice correctly in one of the, maybe in the minutes, that there was another meeting scheduled with Dr. Bonda, I believe, a few days ago?
Yes, we had a meeting with Dr. Bonda. We have a monthly meeting now. Those monthly meetings started in December. Just so everybody knows, and we'll revamp a little bit of what Mr. Guinan said, Dr. Bonda was, she replaced another gentleman who was assigned to be our monitor. We met with him in July. We were the first school district in the state to actually meet with a monitor. That did not go as DESE had planned. And then our next meeting was with Dr. Bonda and Ava Mitchell and a few other people from DESE, which was in November, to talk about where we go next. And then we had a meeting, our first quarterly meeting and our first monthly meeting since July, we had it, I think it was December 15th. And that is where the report, which supposedly covered six months, was actually generated, the quarterly report, which was presented to the school committee in February, was actually given to us, like on January 26th, I think. It was dated January 26th. We got it on the 27th, and then it was presented to you on the 14th. So you had it between the 27th and the 14th, sometime before the school committee meeting on the 14th. We gave it to you so that you would know what they were going to say when they came in. But I want to emphasize that that quarterly report was based on a one monthly meeting. They said during their presentation that they had been coming out monthly to meet with me and the administration. We met in July, and we met in December. In the meantime, I had called a meeting in November, right before Thanksgiving, to figure out where the heck we were with this plan. So I do think the process was unfair and a little bit boggled, but I think we're on the right track now, and I think ultimately it will improve dramatically some of the things that we're doing in our district. We're already implementing the things that we said we were going to implement. We haven't waited for the plan to be approved. And now they have given us some very direct feedback on what documentation they're looking for, so we've been providing that as requested at the February 14th meeting. So we've provided them with a lot of new material in March, or in our last meeting, I can't remember the exact date of it, it was in late February, I believe, with Dr. Bonda. And we have another meeting scheduled, I think, on the 21st of March, which, again, will be presenting evidence to them. And then she sent me a request to actually be able to meet with some students across the district and some staff members across the district to talk about the changes that are going on in our district. So that's sort of where we have been and where we're going.
Could I ask a question? I guess, and I know I brought this up to Mike, and maybe you can clarify it, because we really didn't have a frank, after we digest everything. Why is there such a disconnect between the accountability and the assistance? I'm still trying to wrap myself around this whole issue of this disconnect, because I don't understand it, and I don't understand... Well, I mean, we had a very good working relationship a couple of years ago with that department, and I'm just wondering, it just seems that there's a disconnect between that district and that department now, and I'm concerned about that, that we walked down this path and where this is going.
Yeah, in response to that, I don't think there's a disconnect at all between our district and the people at DESE. We have contact with them almost on a daily basis. They do have two departments there. They have the accountability side, which is the quarterly report, Dr. Bonda and Dr. Mitchell, and then we have the support side, which is Linda Foizie and that group. And what happened was the accelerated improvement plan process was designed and submitted to the school districts to become part of that in one framework. And since then, it's undergone a tremendous number of iterations and changes since that time it was presented to us. So we've been trying to meet their goals, and we just haven't been able to put it in a framework that they can, that they like. Originally, it was designed to be an IEP for a district, an individual plan for every district, would look different for every district, because every district has different needs. But it's turned into be a plan that has to follow a certain format. It has to fall into certain categories. It has to follow this strict, these strict guidelines, and has to be measurable in a certain way. And I think we now have a handle on that, because the first actual feedback in writing that we got in terms of what they were looking for was on January 27th, when the quarterly report came out.
I guess the other concern that I have in the back of my mind is that, I guess I would have liked, from your office at least, relative to just this report, that if it came on January 27th, perhaps, we could have gone in a little bit sooner and called a meeting just to digest it as a group, so that we would have been better prepared for the state. There was, to me and for my colleagues that were here during the tier three report, Mr. Lozal, I mean, that was a kick in the gut to me to have that report presented at this meeting. I don't know how anybody else felt, but I remember going back in that tier three report and just like the air came out of the balloon, and I felt the same way with that report. So I guess a better communication, I'm upset with the communication, I guess, of how that report came out and how it was delivered to the school committee as a thought, so.
Mr. Lozal.
Just a comment. Again, much frustration. We spend hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars to educate kids, and they came in front of us and said, "You're not doing your job." I also, Mr. Chairman, you put it in a way, you know, you feel like you went backwards. When you got the pedal to the metal and were going hard and moving forward, and there's still a lot of work to do, and we understand that, I'm not afraid of the hard work. And then all of a sudden, they come here and said, "You didn't give us the information. You didn't do this right. You didn't do that right." It's like, I felt like I went backwards as a district, and I felt totally incompetent and blindsided. And then Mike comes in, and then we got more liaisons and monitors, and all of a sudden, it reminds me of the same old, same old. Let's dress up the pig again, but it's still a pig. And this is the problem I'm having with my professionals in my district and from Boston, is that I come here as a volunteer, I put a tremendous amount of time in, like all the volunteers, and, you know, and I think I vote things with my heart and mind, thinking I'm doing the right things and putting people in place to do things, and then it doesn't happen. I mean, I know the Galileo thing was a good kick in the teeth for me, that I thought I was a champion of curriculum, and that was a beautiful thing that happened. And I'm seeing this, and I, it's almost like, I feel like I'm going backwards, but, you know, again, it's, hey, look, if it's one step forward back and then move forward, then whatever it is, it is, but I'm telling you, it's not the way the private sector runs, and I just don't see it unless we start moving forward again.
Mr. Ely.
Well, I want to caution everybody, and this is one of the things I had, I took exception with with DESE, is they led you to believe that the accelerated improvement plan was everything we do, and that we weren't doing anything. The accelerated improvement plan is a form. It's simply a form that takes our strategic plan and takes a couple of things out of our strategic plan and plants them on the front burner, and then it asks for documentation about those front burner kind of things. The accelerated improvement plan quarterly report that you got is a very small sliver of what we're actually doing. I think if you ask our teachers, the practice in our district is changing. The practice of teaching is changing. Dr. Anna Cooper, a little bit ago, talked about how practice was changing in the classrooms, how professional development was changing. A lot of things that we do aren't in the accelerated improvement plan, because we've been doing them and will continue to do them. The accelerated plan is a form, that we're just not meeting the needs of the state with the form. And actually, the form now is okay, it's just the, we didn't give them the documentation. Since we now know what documentation we didn't give them, we gave it to them, and they're happy with that. So I think when she comes back before you in April, you'll see a more pleasant picture that we now are meeting the guidelines of the state. We've had this conversation with them a number of times. I want to emphasize something, Mr. Jovan, that we have a good relationship with DESE on both sides of the aisle. We work with them closely. We don't always agree with them, but we're moving the district forward. I think if you see what's happening in the buildings with the teachers and the kids, that they will tell you that things are changing. Yes, a friend of mine used to say that school districts move like elephants. They kind of move when they want to, and they move slowly when they do, generally. We do, in this business, move a little bit slower than we probably should, but we are moving. And most people would tell you our district is light years ahead of where it was a few years ago when you had that Level Four review, and I believe that you're going to see the results, and I think if you ask the teachers, that they see the results that are happening. And the administrators, who are working hard every day in the buildings. I don't want anybody to think that that DESE report is reflective of the work being done in this district by anybody, top to bottom.
Oh, Dr. O'Leary first.
I am, I find myself suffering some of the same frustration right now as a few weeks ago. I mean, take another second to apologize for not staying a month ago. Everyone was upset. I should have handled that better. I didn't want to embarrass myself, and so I bowed out at that point, but I'm sure that everyone felt the same way. Eric, a number of questions. You know, we say we were asked for Mr. Guinan to come. Did we ask him, or did his superiors ask him to come back here?
To come back in front of you?
Yes, sir.
No, you guys asked him to come back, but we told you that before the quarterly report came out, the next time, he would come here and talk to you about what we were actually doing, to prepare you.
Thank you. I found that he was reassuring in some facets. However, it also looked to me like a whole bunch of damage control on his part, coming down from folks to him. I'm hearing that we are in good communication with DESE. We talk to them on almost a daily basis. We had, you know, meetings starting in December. So how can there have been such a huge disconnect for people that are in such communication together? You know, you said DESE was wrong. I thought that DESE was the governing body that guides us, and I hear it touted routinely, oh, DESE says, DESE says, DESE says. And I don't want it to be DESE says when it suits our needs, and DESE is wrong when it suits our needs. So I still, I'm suffering the same, as I said, I'm suffering the same frustration as I did then. This seems to me to be going around and around. The bottom, sorry, Eric, the bottom line is that they had a whole bunch of negative stuff to say about us. We're not, I don't believe, according to that report, or even according to what Mr. Guinan said, that we're light years ahead of anything. That was, as I said, I think I used the word abysmal, and I'm not, enlighten me, I am not hearing how communication has improved. I'm not hearing our communication. I'm just reliving it. I'm not getting anything about, I mean, I'm hearing that we communicate, we communicate, we communicate. Listen, what happened there was not communication between DESE and this district, so...
Well, it was communication, it was just not agreeing. We didn't agree on the communication, and we have certainly made it known. But the bottom line is, they didn't say we weren't doing the thing. What they said is that we weren't providing the documentation that we were doing those things. What they said is, if you're not providing the documentation, then you're not doing it. That's a false assumption. That's a false assumption. If you don't provide documentation, it doesn't mean you're not doing it. It means you didn't know what documentation, in our case, we were supposed to provide. We had the things, and the administrators that were here that night came to me the next day and said, "We have those things. We've been doing those things, and we have the documentation." And then we've provided it to them since then. So the only disconnect, really, and I respect what you're saying, the disconnect is really in the connection between what you're doing and what you're proving that you do through documentation. We now have a framework to perprove what we're doing through the documentation that they want to see, and we didn't have it before.
Just one follow-up, and I do have to leave and take a call.
Yeah, no, I'll yield.
Just one, just quick thing. Thanks, Scott. At the end of their presentation, Eric, one of the things that I was pretty concerned about was they had, we started to talk about, well, documentation, we'll get the documentation. It's a paraphrase. We'll give you this, give you that. And that woman, I'm sorry, I don't remember her name, stood here and said, "I want to let you know, this is not an issue with documentation." She said that. Now, this is DESE, the governing body, we're supposed to be listening, you know, what do I do with that? What do I do with this whole thing, again?
Well, I think you believe what the administrators are saying in this district, and what the teachers are saying in this district, and you take in everything with a grain of salt from somebody who was here one afternoon for about two hours to say, "We're not doing anything in this district," after one meeting for two hours. That's what we got. Okay? So we're here every day, seeing what we do. She was here one day for two hours. Do I agree with what she said? No. But I know it's not going to do any good to sit here and argue with them on TV. I take that up with them later, and I took it up with them later. So now we're doing exactly what they want us to do. It becomes a compliance exercise, but it also, it is moving us forward, and we are being able to document the things now.
Thank you, Eric.
Mr. Lozal.
These statements, Mr. Superintendent, these statements frustrate me more than the We got blasted in the front page on what a terrible job we're doing as far as, call it documentation, whatever flim-flam we're going to play, okay? The bottom line came down to is, they want a documentation of what we're doing in this district. Why can't we get them documentation in a timely manner? Did we not know what we were doing as far as the documentation? And then she says it wasn't the documentation, and then we don't want to argue on the TV? Well, let me tell you something. When they're on TV and we get blown up in the newspaper, the first thing, our reputation as a school district is on the line. And when I turn around and I say, geez, you know, we spend a lot of money to not do it right. You know, we have a curriculum team on board, 100% with a coordinator. We have a superintendent, a business manager. We have a school committee. We have administrators. We have a great unit of teachers. And I'm sitting here going backwards, I feel, when we should be going forward. Now, they said, however anybody wants to interpret what they said, oh, they didn't say what they meant, and they meant what they said. Why didn't they get that documentation? They should have had that documentation. You know, doing a good job is one thing, but documenting it, like we do on every project we do with the school building and everything, it's all about what those little kids did. They documented it, and they give you data. And data is analyzed by the experts, and you say, "Very good. You've done a good job." Or, "You're not doing a good job because I don't have your data." So why didn't the data get there in the first place? That, again, we're chasing our tail, and we're doing a, oh, no, it wasn't that, it's something else. And I'm constantly feeling like there's damage control to make it look like whatever it's supposed to look like, I guess. I'm not sure.
We're covering, we're covering the same thing we covered on the 28th. As I said to you that night, we did provide documentation, just not the documentation they were looking for. And the other thing was, they were supposed to send us a list of the documentation they were looking for, two weeks ahead of the quarterly meeting, which would have been December 7th roughly, maybe a little bit before that. They never sent that request, so we didn't know what documentation they wanted, they were looking for, and then after our meeting, they never asked for any documentation. I can't explain why they did what they did, but that's what they did.
Eric, you just got done telling me what a great line of communication you have with the DESE. Why? I'm sitting here as a layperson, a volunteer...
And I can't explain why.
And I am just totally baffled by their performance and all the performance around us. We have a great line of communication with DESE. If I need a public relations guy, I'll do it myself. I need somebody that can do it, get the job done, and provide the data. Now, I know our teachers are doing the job. I know what we're doing in our district, but if it's not getting to Boston, we're having a disconnect, and with that great communication relationship we have, I'm sitting here and I'm baffled again, and I just build more frustration. That's all I have to say. Thanks.
Mr. DeGogor?
Well, if memory serves me correctly, when the state was here four weeks ago, speaking to them was like trying to blow bubbles in mud. We dealt with semantics 95% of the time. We had any type of dialogue going with them. We spoke about documentation. As Dr. O'Leary says, the end, they were like, "It's not about documentation," but in fact, of course, it's about documentation. They have come here once in July and once in December. I'm not sure how long they stayed. Probably didn't stay overnight, probably didn't stay the whole day. Do I think that there's maybe a communication issue here? Absolutely. Do I think that there's more than enough blame to go around on both sides? Certainly. Do I think the kids in Southridge are getting a good education? Absolutely. I believe that, I believe that 100% that they are. I will say this. If someone tells me that they want their, you know, to build, I don't care, to build a house, and they don't tell me how to build it or what they want, well, you know what? They're going to get whatever I give them. And every time we asked these people a question four weeks ago, they didn't really have an answer. They tap danced wonderfully, but they didn't have an answer. And we asked very pointed questions, well, what were you looking for there? And they went off on some other tangent. They circled their own wagons, you know, they circled the wagons right there in front of us. I'm not privy to the communication between our superintendent and the state. I'm not privy between our superintendent and the principals of the buildings. So I can't really comment on what type of communication is going on there, what instruction is going on there. The only thing I can communicate, that I can comment on, is what I saw four weeks ago and what I saw two weeks ago. And the individual who stood here, I don't think it was... it was, I mean, maybe you do, maybe you think it was some type of, you know, control of, you know, a bad situation. To me, he sounded more like he was reading off some facts. And some of the facts were that the state didn't show when they were supposed to and didn't provide the documentation they were supposed to provide. From what I understood by that gentleman, those people had things they were supposed to supply and never did. So we were in the, you know, in the ocean without our oars, you know, because they didn't come through with what they wanted until they show up on our doorstep and basically, you know, sneak attack us with all this stuff. Was I upset? I was as upset as the gentleman to my left. Did I want to leave? Just as badly as he did. But I also wanted some answers. And unfortunately, there were none forthcoming from the crew that we had in front of us. We had criticism without anything constructive about it. They kept saying, "Well, you were at the door, but you haven't gone through the door." Well, I don't need analogies. I don't need, you know, that kind of posturing. I need, what do you want from us? And you tell us what you want, and then we'll see if we can provide that. We didn't get that. Got some insults. We've got, you know, we got our coats handed to us. And was I embarrassed? Damn straight. Have we spent a lot of money? Hell, yeah. But I expect more from the state. I do. You know, they see fit that they're going to give us a new building. But if you don't give us the tools to supply what needs to go inside the damn building, then I don't really care about your building. You can have it back. Thank you.
Dr. D'Amico?
How is it possible that an advisor assigned by DESE to our district for this very specific purpose and our central office, together with all the expertise and experience, don't know what's expected from them as a Level 4 district? How is that possible?
I think we do. I certainly understand what's expected of me. Absolutely. That's without a doubt. I know exactly what's expected of me. I think the teachers know what's expected of them. I know what, I think the administrators know what's expected of them. I think this accelerated improvement plan process is new. It's never been done in the United States before. It was adopted from England and adapted into the United States, into Massachusetts by the DESE, and then it was changed because the group that actually did it in England was fired, and they hired somebody else to run a program that was actually generated and created in a foreign country. So I think the process has been strange. We are certainly not the only district to struggle with it. There are other districts that have struggled with the process. I, you know, I'm not worried about those other districts. Quite frankly, I'm worried more about ours. I can tell you that the people in this district, including myself, work very hard every day to make sure that these kids get what they need and that they're challenged. And we'll continue to do so. And the accelerated improvement plan is a way to focus us on a couple of things, but, you know, you can't just stop and worry about a couple of things all the time. You have, you have a big district to run, and you have a lot of initiatives going on in this district that are going forward and making things better. And I think to say that we don't understand what was expected of us, we absolutely understand what is expected of us in terms of helping kids learn and helping kids achieve. What we struggled with was meeting some expectations in terms of documentation and a new process. And for that, we have a disagreement with DESE about whether they've even given clear guidance and whether they're still giving clear guidance, because the whole thing has changed even again since the last time. We now have a whole new plan that comes forward. So I, you know, I'm not going to defend us not, you know, I can't defend us not giving them the documentation that they wanted. I didn't know what they wanted. Now I do. We're giving it to them. All that's going to change when the new plan gets implemented and gets approved, because we still, to this day, don't have an approved plan by DESE that to implement. We've just expected implemented plan they haven't yet approved, which we've been doing. And so we certainly understand what we have to do. And I would say that on a daily basis, the people that work in this district want to be here, work hard while they're here, and work with the kids every day. And I think it's, I think it's inaccurate to say we don't understand what's expected of us. We certainly understand what's expected of us.
Well, I'll just conclude. I heard repeatedly, we were not sure what they wanted from us. That, to me, translates, well, we don't, we, we don't know what really to expect that they expect, whatever it is. But assuming that that's all cleared up, what assurances do we have that what is being in the works now will be satisfactory to DESE on April 2nd?
Well, that's a good question. And I've asked the same question, just so you know. DESE has now added to the number of consultants that they're giving us, and they're actually assigned a consultant that had worked in another district on another plan that was approved, and our plan will mirror theirs. Ironically, when we looked at our plan against theirs, there were some things that were in theirs that were also in ours, and they were approved in theirs but not approved in ours. So it's not an easy, I mean, what may seem very obvious to some people is not quite as obvious in practice. We believe, because this other plan's been approved, and we're mirroring ours after that, and we're just taking the initiatives that our administrators and teachers came up with and putting it in that framework, we believe that it will be approved, and we've been assured that it will be approved by the new consultant coming in. But I believe it when I see it.
Dr. D'Amico?
You said you have provided in the meantime all the documentation, the evidence of everything that we were criticized for not doing to the DESE. I would like the whole packet tomorrow morning of all the evidence that was submitted to DESE as proof that we actually have done it, but we just haven't shown it.
Yeah, you're not going to get that tomorrow morning, because I have a schedule I have to follow tomorrow. But we'll get it for you as soon as possible, and we'll send it out to the entire school committee.
Could we agree to the end of the week?
I'd rather not. I think having the packet available, throwing it on a Xerox machine, and having the secretary make it available would be nice. But if that is undoable, then...
We'll get it to you as quickly as we can.
Well, no, I'm trying to put a timeline on it. Quickly as can, that would mean staff. So if I, if we say by Friday, it's to every school committee member, could we have that? Would that be...
Sure.
I think that's fair. I mean, I know your office is busy. We got a lot of projects going on, but...
No, I can't do it tomorrow morning. I can do it by the Friday easily, yes.
No, that's understandable, but by end of the week, I think is more than fair to put a timeline on it so that there's no question on that. Anything further?
Dr. D'Amico?
Yeah, I'd like to. I'd like to make a motion for the chair and vice chair to discuss this further with the superintendent, to meet with the superintendent, discuss this further, and include it as an agenda item at the executive session, if appropriate, according to the open meeting law and any other possible provision.
Okay, so the motion is to, for the chair and vice chair to meet with the superintendent...
To meet with the superintendent to further discuss this issue and include, include it on the executive session agenda.
If appropriate, I mean...
If appropriate.
To report back to the school committee, is that what you're trying to say?
Correct, correct.
So I think her motion is to, for the vice chair and myself to meet with Mr. Ely about this issue and to report back.
Can I just get clarification about what issue?
Is this the DESE issue and the process further, so we can report back and whatever dissatisfaction that we might have? Okay. All right. There was a second. Any discussion on that?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead, Mrs. Princip.
I would like to know why Dr. D'Amico doesn't meet with the superintendent. Why, I mean, why would you charge other people to do that?
I think it's appropriate that the chair, chair and vice chair with the, meet with the superintendent. I don't understand your question.
Exactly what will they be looking for? I'm confused.
This is a discussion that can go a lot further, a lot longer. I think we are not done talking about this issue. I think it needs to be discussed further, and clearly some of the committee members right now would rather be at home, clearly did not want to participate. And I think it's only prudent that we discuss this further, and then they report back to the school committee whether this is appropriate to be included on executive session minute, agenda, rather.
I'd like to be in that meeting also. Wouldn't be a quorum.
I'd still like to know what the meeting's about.
I personally am still confused. There's been a lot of blame. They didn't do this. These guys didn't do that. This didn't happen. They didn't happen. We have the data. It's been a circus, even tonight. It's a circus.
Dr. O'Leary, let me, and I said, as I said this to other school committee members tonight, ultimately, what happens in this district is superintendent's responsibility. I will take responsibility for any misunderstanding or whatever's happened with this situation. I'm rectifying the situation. I want, I will guarantee you that. I will meet with you separately. I will do anything, any, anybody, I will meet with them separately. My problem is only, I just need some clarity on what this new meeting's about and how in the world it can ever be executive session material. This is a public, this is a public body, and if we're going to talk about this DESE report, I can stay, I can stay all night. I believe we're doing the right things in our district. I've been, I'm always happy to meet with Mr. Lazo and Mr. Jovan, and I'm always happy to meet with Dr. D'Amico. I met with, I've met with school committee members. Anybody who wants to come into my office can meet with me. But this is a serious issue of clarity. And I'm trying to be as clear as I can, and I guess I keep repeating myself. And I, because I'm not sure, maybe I need, I need to become a little better teacher. I need to sort of sit back and see what the confusion area is and try to clarify it in a different way. The bottom line is here, we are, we're new to a process, and the process is a little messed up. And as a result of that, we got a bad, a bad review from DESE, a quarterly review, which we are taking our steps to rectify for the next quarterly review. And I, you know, I can only guarantee that we're working daily to make sure that happens. But I'm still, I'm still quite not sure if our new plan's going to be approved.
Mr. Lazo?
It's a motion on the floor. I move the question.
Question's been moved. All in favor of moving the question. Roll call.
Move the question?
Yep.
Mrs. Woodruff?
Yes.
Mr. D'Grigorio?
Yes.
Dr. D'Amico?
Yes.
Mr. Jovan?
Yes.
Mr. Lazo?
Yes.
Dr. O'Leary?
Yes.
Mrs. Principay?
Yep.
Seven yes to move.
Motion on the floor is for the vice chair and the chair to meet with the superintendent, discuss this issue. We discuss a lot of issues. I'll gladly meet with the superintendent on this issue, and whatever we need to report back to the school committee, we will. Okay?
May I ask what format that would take?
Point of order, Mr. Chairman. We move the question. There's no discussion. Let's vote on this and get on to our executive session. I don't want to stay here till 1:00 in the morning.
Okay, question's been moved. So roll call.
O'Leary?
Yes.
Dr. D'Amico?
Yes.
Mr. Jovan?
Yes.
Mr. Lazo?
Yes.
Dr. O'Leary?
Yes.
Mrs. Principay?
No.
Mrs. Woodruff?
No.
Five yes, two no.
Okay. Okay, any other new business? See, now, school committee reports, policy, I mean, curriculum subcommittee, Mr. D'Grigorio.
Nothing to report. Meeting scheduled for, excuse me, scheduled for March 19th at 6:00.
What is it? I'm sorry, March 19th?
Yes, 6:00.
Thank you. Policy, Mr. Woodruff?
No meeting scheduled and no reports this evening. Thank you.
If I, if I could possibly refer, I know, Mr. Ely, this was the question that came up about possible policy change for kindergarten age. That would have to be vetted in policy.
Yes, it would.
So could we refer that to the, there's an issue...
I'll sit with her and get her schedule.
Right. The issue is that there's some parents that wish to possibly school choice their children into Southbridge for kindergarten, and other parents within the district that have kindergartens that are close to the cutoff age, and we're trying to develop a procedure to say whether we would accept them or not at an earlier age. But that would have to go through policy as well as the district. So I'd like to start, get that started if we do vet it in policy first. Okay, so we set that up, because we would need three readings for the policy. So we would want to get that moving. Okay. Budget, facilities, transportation?
Mr. Chairman, the meeting, several meetings were held over the past two weeks, and we have agreed to recommend the bottom-line budget for public hearing in the amount of $24,484,504. And the public hearing, Terry, if you can help me out, is scheduled for?
It's going to be 6:30 on Wednesday, March 21st, immediately preceding the special meeting of the full committee at 7:00 that same evening here in the town council chambers.
Mr. Lazo?
Just a quick comment. You know, it's always, when something doesn't go right, we're always hopping on stuff. I just have to say that our business manager, Terry Wiggins, brought in a new format, a whole different presentation. Tanya D'Amico is chairman, with Marylin Principay, myself, and was the alternate. I just want the public to know that we sit there in those meetings, and I think that Mr. Wiggins is a breath of fresh air. He actually brings the budget the way you can understand it and that you can work it. It's actually a working document. Terry, job well done. I really am impressed. I've dealt with a lot of finance directors, and I have to rank you right up with John LaFlesch. Thank you.
High praise.
That's high praise.
High praise, indeed.
And congratulations to Mr. LaFlesch, former business manager for the school district and as finance director for the town, as being named the superintendent of schools at Bay Path Regional Vocational Technical School. So congratulations to him. I'm sure you'll be working with him, Eric, as we move forward. Great guy. Okay.
Excellent.
Collective bargain?
No report at this time. Under the building committee, as chairman of the building committee, we have a tour this Saturday, 9:00, March 17th. That's all I have.
And as regards to the tour as well, and Gus, if you can get this in the paper as far as the tours, that I will be available at the site for people to sign their releases at the site, so they don't need to come to the superintendent's office, because I know that could be a hardship for some people. So anybody that wishes to tour the building on the 17th, just show up at 9:00.
They can still do it here.
And they still can come to the town hall if they wish, but I will have the releases there on Saturday morning so that they could tour. And any members of the school committee, if you have not toured the building, I'd encourage you to go up and tour, because it is really moving along.
Mr. Chairman, if I may comment, I've been touring the high school at around 3:30, 4:00 with various Department of Ed teachers that can't make the tours in groups. So if a group that wants to, contact the front office. They'll contact me. Some of the people are just stunned. We're, we're moving right along. And I know that the completion right now, the ceramic tile, finished floors, cabinetry, outstanding. It's really coming together.
Okay, thank you. January 16th, executive session. Vote to go in executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining for union, non-union personnel. Litigation to the extent that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the governmental body pursuant to Chapter 38, Section 21, Part 3. Is there a motion?
No.
Second?
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Dr. D'Amico?
Yes.
Mr. Jovan?
Yes.
Mr. Lazo?
Yes.
Dr. O'Leary?
Yes.
Mrs. Principay?
Yep.
Mrs. Woodruff?
Yes.
Mr. D'Grigorio?
Yes.
Seven yes.
The school committee will reconvene in an open session for the purposes of German